To the May 28th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We'll introduce the board. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chairman of the board. We have Ken Foreman, who is the vice chairman, Bob Dugan, who is the clerk, Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, Scott Zalinski, who is a full voting member, Mary Berry, who is an associate member, and James Morse, who is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for the night, and from the Falmouth IT department, we have Thomas Cox and Adriana Catano. And we thank them for helping us out tonight along with FCTV. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town and considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. And I should also mention at this point that in accordance with the governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the coronavirus outbreak, this meeting is physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative measures have been put in place to provide public access via FCTV. And real-time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. To get to Zoom, you can go to www.falmouthmass.us/zba. And from there, you can turn on the app and send any questions or concerns that you might have about the projects here tonight. The board's decisions are made through the public hearing process, and the board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes for a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. We ask that public comment shouldn't be only directed at the project itself. We also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can be a question about the nature of the project, or it could be opinion in favor or in opposition to the project. All members of the public wishing to speak again should use the Zoom webinar chat feature on the Zoom app. And again, that is accessible via the town's website at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. And we will then either continue or close the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. On the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve what be made and voted on. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote for members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to our agenda for the night, we have public comment. We have four continuations, three new hearings, and we have a number of items on our open meeting agenda as well. The first public comment on the agenda is meant for anything for the public to address that is not on the agenda tonight. So if anyone has any sort of comment that does not pertain to anything on the agenda, go ahead and type that in on the Zoom webinar chat. And if we get anything in, we can certainly read it out loud. And that leaves us with the rest of the regular agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take items out of order. Starting with open meeting item number three, which is the request for insubstantial changes to approve comprehensive permit 020-19 MEWAD 0 and 213 North Falmouth Highway, then going to the continuations, but taking Buzzits Bay Development 78-19 and moving that to the end of the new hearings.
Second, Mr. Dugan's motion.
Thank you, Scott. So the motion to take the agenda items out of order was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. James?
James Morse.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed? And Ed, you're on mute right now.
I don't see a picture of him either.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. And TJ Hurry, aye. We will
There you go.
Take those items out of order as Bob specified. First, with the open meeting agenda item number three, the request for insubstantial changes to approve comprehensive permit 20-19 MEWAD 0 and 213 North Falmouth Highway in North Noreen, I know we have a few participants as far as this goes.
Yes, we have David Udi, who is representing the applicant.
Hi, this is Dave Udi. I think it just got kicked off, but I got back in. Can you guys see me and hear me?
Here I come.
You're just sideways.
All right, let me turn my phone again. How's that?
There you go.
Very good.
All right, cool. Technology is an amazing thing. Thank you so much for taking this out of order and taking us first tonight. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, these insubstantial changes. I think these changes came about as a result of great cooperation between this board, this board's council, and my client, and myself. And we would request that the board approve this request for insubstantial changes. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and all of you have had this information, I think, for a bit now.
Thank you, Attorney Udi. We'll just turn it to board questions, and if anyone has any, just go right ahead and ask.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read what the actual changes were?
Sure.
All right, so item number one, condition number seven shall be modified to read, the maximum height of the dwelling shall be 28 feet with the addition, unless the ZBA approves a greater height, as an insubstantial change. Number two, which is condition 10, shall be modified to read, the development shall be limited to a maximum of eight duplex dwellings, 16 total units, with a maximum of 48 bedrooms, as shown on plans referenced in condition number two. Four of the units shall remain in perpetuity, affordable to eligible purchasers, whose annual income shall not exceed 80% of the area median income, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The four affordable housing dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town subsidized housing inventory, SHI, maintained by DHCD. Any increase in the number of bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw in this comprehensive permit. Three, the change to condition number 16 shall be modified to read, the first floor master bedrooms and the first floor bathrooms shall be handicapped accessible. Handicapped accessible shall mean that the units will have 32-inch wide doors, which will allow wheelchair to maneuver within the unit and enter the first floor bathroom. Handicapped access ramps shall not be provided unless specifically requested by the first prospective owner. Four, condition number 17 shall be modified to read, a certified plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to the ZBA for review and approval prior to the application for a building permit. The plan shall show at a minimum the following proposed specifications, which are lot dimensions, driveway limits of pavement, limits of sidewalk, building locations, building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, retaining wall locations, closest distance to nearest property line from each retaining wall, measured from the limits of excavation, required for installation of the wall, including the wall foundation, wall extents, and any required drainage aggregate, reinforced backfill, and geosynthetic reinforcement, locations of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas and the limits of work to be demarcated in the field. Five, which is in addition to condition number 24, which will appear at the end, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for building number five, the applicant shall deposit the sum of $5,000 with a local landscape company chosen by Ariel Rubin in Alberta Anderson, 45 McMenamy Drive, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, which abuts building number five. The funds shall be used to install landscaping in the form of trees and shrubs of their choice on the property at 45 McMenamy Drive, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, to screen the view of building number five from their property. The contract with the landscaping company shall provide them in the event of any funds left in the account with the landscape company, six months after the date of deposit, such funds shall be returned to the applicant. And those are all the changes that were proposed.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I'm sorry, is this resulting in a change in the number of units?
Yes.
Personally, don't see how that's insubstantial, but.
Is Ken frank?
Ken, in answer to Ken's question, it's a restoration of two units that were deleted in the decision, but they were in the original application. When you restore something that's in the original application, it's not considered a substantial change. It's deemed an insubstantial change by definition and Housing Appeals Committee rules. So therefore, it is not a substantial change, and it's appropriate for the board to consider it as an insubstantial change.
Okay. I just, you know, I feel like the public, has the public been made aware?
It was in the original application that when you heard the case, it was discussed, so it's not considered a substantial change.
Right, but anyone from the public who was there saw the decision and saw those units being deleted?
Well, it's a fair question, but that's the answer.
Any other questions?
I guess, were the units moved? So that, as I recall, there was an issue with construction too close to the lot line and the need for retaining wall and so forth.
Yeah, this is Attorney Udi. Yeah, that's something that was, that we disagreed with, and that's something that through the settlement process and the appeal process, we believe was made clear to the board that there were no issues with respect to the retaining wall or screening or anything of that nature. But as a good gesture, on the applicant's part, we agreed to deposit funds in the one neighbor that would abut that building so they could install any screening that they wanted to for up to $5,000. But we submitted landscaping and other plans to the board to show that there were no issues with respect to retaining walls or anything with respect to the abutter.
Okay, well, I guess that's something.
TJ?
Go ahead, Frank.
We did show the plans to the town engineer and ask for comment, then received none in reply.
Okay, that's good information, because that was really the original issue, was the engineer didn't feel that it was possible to construct that without disturbing the neighbor.
So, Ken, we have retained the ability to have the town engineer review the plans as they proceed into construction?
Any other questions from the board? We'll just need to get Ed Van Kuren re-elevated. I think he was having a connection issue there.
TJ, does this require a supermajority?
I'm not sure, Noreen? Or maybe Frank? I'm not sure if you know either.
It's a four-fifths vote, I believe, for a comprehensive permit, correct?
Yeah, yep, that's correct.
I might just add, the participants in the mediation were TJ Hurry and Bob Dugan from the board, Noreen, myself, and Irie Mullen, the Associate Town Council, and the mediator was Mark Bobrowski, who was previously served as council for this board and some other matters. But that was with the full knowledge of all parties.
Ed, you're back with us. You're on mute, though. Ben, you're on mute.
Okay, now?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay.
Does the board want to have any sort of discussion or want to entertain a vote? Let's hear from anyone right now. All right, if there's no discussion, does anyone want to make any other sort of motion?
So I'd make a motion to accept the proposed changes that discussed this evening as insubstantial changes, which will be a modification to the comprehensive permit, number 020-19M dot FMEWAD 0 and 213 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Mass.
All right, so the motion to approve is insubstantial changes was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. We'll do a roll call vote, and I think the members, Noreen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the voting members on this are the regular voting members?
Yes.
Thank you.
This proceeded, Scott.
So that's, so then there would be only four of us? So then it would be the regular voting members minus Scott then? Or would it be, would it be anyone else, Noreen?
Can't, well, it seems to me that if there was an alternate member who was present at all the hearings, they should be appointed to vote.
Yes, you could certainly have Mary. She was present for all the hearings.
Thank you for that. So I will appoint Mary for this vote. We will do a roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
I'm opposed.
Ed Van Kuren, aye. TJ Hurry, aye. And Mary?
Mary Berry, opposed.
So that's three to two, then?
Mr. Chairman, can I provide a comment?
You may.
Through the chair, I'm a bit confused by this process, and I just want to put this on the record that we litigated this issue. It was represented to me through town council that the members of this board who attended the mediation had the authority of this board to negotiate on behalf of the board in good faith. We spent a significant amount of time and money on both sides to do that. And we reached an agreement that the board represented was satisfactory through its representatives at the mediation. And now we're back before you, and the board has voted three to two on this issue, which if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, if it requires four fifths of the members to approve it, now we're back to square one. We're going to be back to litigation. And I'm really confused by this turn of events. Obviously, the board doesn't need to comment or say anything to me, but I just wanted to put on the record that I really don't understand what's happening here. Were the representatives that went to the mediation authorized to settle this? And if so, what happened? Thank you.
Thank you. So that was a three to two vote, and it would be a failure to carry on that vote. So with that, with that vote, we would be going back to the regular continuations, then?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have application 90-19 Rapucci, which is 24 Prospect Street in Falmouth.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm recused from Rapucci, so I'm gonna go dark.
Thank you very much. And Bob recused on this, so the voting numbers are myself, Ed Van Kuren, James Morse, and Mary Berry. And I don't know do we have anyone for the applicant tonight?
Mr. Chairman, since the next, I think, two hearings don't involve me, I'm gonna step out. Is that okay?
All right, you'll go dark. That's fine.
I do not see the applicant, Paul Rapucci, present in the audience.
Excuse me, I'm just getting I moved Nick up. Is he for this group as well? He had his hand raised.
No, I don't know. He was on the last application.
Okay, I'm gonna be moving you back down to attendee then, Nick.
All right. So where we left off on this application, it had been continued a number of times, and at the last hearing, the applicant submitted a request for a withdrawal without prejudice, which the board denied. And instead, we voted on a continuation to this date, expecting the applicant to be here. I'm not sure if there's anything else to add, Noreen?
No, he was advised about the meeting this evening, and last I knew, he was intending to be present.
He was intending?
Uh, yes.
And once again, that puts the board in quite a position. And again, the voting numbers on this are myself, Ed Van Kuren, James Morse, and Mary Berry.
Mr. Chairman, what historically has the board done when you've had an applicant that's been continued and has been unresponsive to board questions or in a similar situation?
This sort of case, I it's pretty rare, this set of circumstances, James. And Noreen, would the issues that were occurring earlier in terms of logging in, would Mr. Rapucci be experiencing that at all?
I would assume that's not the case. It seems that the public access through the town's website has been fine, and that this issue was confined to the board members. That being said, Mr. Rapucci did send in a request for a withdrawal without prejudice. So typically, that would go back to the board as far as voting to either accept that or not.
So he submitted another request to withdraw without prejudice?
So his request was to withdraw without prejudice, and the board, he did not attend the last hearing because he understood that he did not need to, where he had requested the dismissal. I think he assumed that the board would just vote to accept that.
I understand. Thank you, Noreen. And James, to your point, this is, it's a rare set of circumstances here where there is an applicant that's not present and had requested a withdrawal. Without going into the details, we denied it, and now we're at this point. I did advise the applicant at the beginning of the process, when it first opened, that we were down to four members that night. It was his choice, electing, ultimately, he elected to proceed as other two options were to withdraw and reapply or simply continue without opening the hearing in the hopes of having a full board.
Two is the board had significant concerns about the garage, the location of the stairs, setbacks, foundation pouring close to the lot lines. There were some, the board had issues. I have to call.
We did, we did. And at this point, it really leaves us with limited options as to how to proceed, or we could vote to continue again, but he's not here tonight. Or we our other possibilities are to, I suppose, on the board's own action, Noreen, we could make a motion to withdraw, either with or without prejudice.
I think you certainly can. I guess what I would say to you is where the applicant is not present, you certainly have the right to withdraw with prejudice. However, I think if you do accept the withdrawal without prejudice, should he choose to reapply, you will have this discussion further on the issues anyway. So it may be most fair, albeit your choice, to, if you're going to accept the withdrawal, to do it without prejudice.
Thank you, Noreen. So as it's
I think
Sorry, Mary didn't.
I just wanted to mention, you have something going on in the chat on this.
Thank you, Mary. I'm just trying to take a look at that. Okay, I think that was, that's from an abutter. So as it stands, So as it stands, I think the board has two options to either make a vote to withdraw without prejudice, which is what the applicant originally requested and allows him to reapply or to withdraw without prejudice and of course, I say that with a little bit of hesitation because that would deny the applicant coming back before the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So I'll I'll leave it to the voting board members on this. If you want to have any sort of discussion as to what sort of motion should be made and why. James, do you wanna? Do you have any comment?
So I'll start by saying, yeah, I would would not be in favor of any type of continuance. This has been on the docket, and it's been a lot of time has been put into this. Lot of a butter comment. I, out of fairness, would not be opposed to a motion to allow him to withdraw without prejudice. I think that the applicant received some significant pushback based on the current proposal. So if he were to come back with the essentially the same proposal, he knows he's probably gonna have an uphill battle. So I guess I'd be okay with allowing him to withdraw without prejudice. And just basic fairness, given the kind of unusual circumstances as well as the initial log on problem tonight.
Thank you, James. Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to to see if you were going to read out loud the public comment on this particular issue, or is the hearing closed?
I'm gonna defer to Norine on that. I'm not sure if I can have any public comments since the applicant's not here.
So I think it would be rational to read the public comment into the record. I'm not certain that the hearing was closed.
Right, I'm I'm just I just wasn't sure about allowing public comment, that's all. It it's an odd set of circumstances that we're under, right?
It was, oh, sorry, it was not closed. The hearing was not closed, so you can't accept public comment.
Okay. Thank you for that. So the public comment is from Margaret Van Amberg, and if I mispronounced that, my apologies. She says her login was fine and the applicant is not following procedure. So thank you, Margaret, for logging on and providing public comment. Ed, what's your opinion?
I would I would let him let him go and let him come back in his convenience if he gets his act together and spend more time. He shouldn't be penalized for two years. And so I would go along with granting it without a penalty.
All right, thank you, Ed. It's it's a tough call. It really is. And I it's a major penalty to deny someone the right or deny someone the opportunity rather to come before the board for two years. And with the application, throughout the application process, I think there were a number of things that were identified that the applicant could work on and potentially reapply to us. So I would be in favor of a motion for withdrawal without prejudice. All right.
Mary, have any feelings on this? She wants to get on the record?
No, I I'm ready to vote.
All right. In that case, Mr. Chairman, I will move in hearing nineteen ninety dash nineteen Rapucci, twenty four Prospect Street, Falmouth, that the applicant be allowed to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, withdrawal with prejudice. Motion was made by James and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, James.
James Morse side.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So it's unanimous. The applicant will be allowed to withdraw without prejudice, which affords him the opportunity to apply at a future date. Next on the agenda, we have application ninety six dash nineteen, March ninety four Nantucket Ave in Falmouth. And the voting numbers on this are myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, Mary Berry, and James Morse. And Norine, if you could help me with who is here for the applicant tonight?
Yes, we have Mike McGrath. And he's now been elevated to panelist.
Thank you very much. And was there another individual for this project or not tonight?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you, Mike. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Well, while I start. This is a continued hearing. This is a application to it's a special permit to renovate an existing dwelling and to construct a second story on a house at ninety four Nantucket Avenue, and we have submitted color graphics. I suppose the other thing that could happen is I could split my screen and show you, but that doesn't seem to be on an option on my on on this control panel. But in any case, you did continue the hearing. You were worried about the in order to build a second story, there is the plan shows that the foundation will be reinforced. And what the board was worried about is does this construction buy so much as to force the applicant in accordance with the building code to elevate the structure? So what we what I did was, we have submitted one a letter from the structural engineer that describes how the foundation will be reinforced. I submitted an appraisal of the structure. Under the building code, the whenever the building commissioner issues a permit for a house in a floodplain and it's not being elevated, then there is a requirement that there be a comparison of the construction cost to the appraised value of the structure. You can either use the tax records or you can submit a new appraisal. In this case, we submitted a new appraisal, and the value of the structure according to Clancy's is two hundred thousand dollars. I did submit that to you. And then the town of Falmouth uses what's called a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet. For every time someone applies for builder permit in the in the in the floodplain and you're not elevating the structure. So the contractor is Harbor Homes. They filled out that FEMA cost breakdown worksheet, and I submitted it to the town, and it's less than fifty percent of the appraised value of two hundred thousand. It's like just under a hundred thousand dollars. So I did send that to the board. I also asked the building commissioner if he would comment to the board, and I think he did make an oral report that this that basically it's a lot of work for him to review this, and he preferred to do it when they applied for builder permit. And if it doesn't pass his muster, he will send them back to you. So I believe that we meet the criteria. I mean, I'm sorry, I believe we have answered the core questions of the issues that you brought up, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. And by my own admission, I was not a math major, and I don't mean to be crass, but you said the calculations were just under fifty percent. I have it at forty nine point ninety eight percent. Is that correct?
Yes, but if you have a rule and it's and it's less than fifty percent, it's up to the the way this works is the building commissioner has to be satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Like I said, I'm not the greatest in math, so I just wanted to make sure that's what the number was, under under fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was another issue that the one of the one of the board members noted that the one of the lot corners was staked on an encroaching piece of driveway, but it's only about three or four square feet, so it's less than point one percent of the lot. So I look at it as completely de minimis.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. We'll turn it to other board questions. And before I do that, if there's anyone out there who has any sort of public comment on this, go ahead and use the webinar chat, use your name and address for the record, and we will address it when the time comes. But as for board questions, Bob, do you have any questions?
Actually, just a comment first, Mr. Marter. So as far as the testimony regarding the building commissioner, we don't have anything in writing. We don't have anything that's been proposed to us from the building commissioner, just so the board members know. And I'm not a math major either, but it seems to it's coming down to an actual figure of twenty five dollars.
Just to let the board know, I did have a brief conversation with Rod Palmer, the building commissioner today, and he did explain that there was quite a bit of work involved in his review as part of issuing a building permit. That being said, his recommendation was that if the board was satisfied with the proposal as currently is, that you would have the option to vote for that and that you could then condition it such that if there was a requirement that the building be elevated, that it would have to come back to you for that change.
Thank you, Norine. Bob, any other questions? You're muted.
No questions. Just then, when it's time for board discussions, I'll I'll talk to that point.
Thank you, Bob. Ed, anything?
Yeah, my only concern is it's so close to the the number of the twenty five dollars. It's within the accuracy of the estimate. And so I would go along with the words that Norine just said, that Rod Palmer suggested be in the findings.
Thank you, Ed. Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
You'll have to excuse me. I can't find my notes on this one, but was the change in the foundation gonna trigger any type of further review by CONCOM or the engineering? I believe it did, but if I'm wrong, please someone correct me. But if so, can we just have something in the record about that issue?
I think Bob has the file.
Yeah, so CONCOM did originally put a notation in the file. They were concerned with the concrete block foundation that when they were trying to shore it up, that there may be additional problems there. So that was one of their concerns. They did submit, the applicant did submit something in showing how they were gonna shore up the foundation. But I don't know if that went to CONCOM or not.
I did observe the plans. I didn't know Mr. McGrath might want to speak any of that for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGrath?
We got a request for determination of applicability by the Conservation Commission. With my computer, I I have trouble, you know, minimizing you and locating the document, but I would be happy to look at that decision. But in any case, I looked at the increase in the construction as 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 completely de minimis. It's it is within a land can subject to coastal storm flow, which we're talking about. It's in an A zone. But we're we are a significant distance away from most of the resource areas. But we are within jurisdiction, and they have issued a a decision that under an IDA.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, James?
No, thank you.
So James, the the comment from CONCOM, just, you know, they put a notation on the referral that says if the foundation requires repair, the applicant must refile with CONCOM.
That was my reg election. Thank you.
Any other follow up questions from the board at this time? Not seeing any. I think it might be appropriate to have board discussion since oh, Mr. McGrath, go right ahead.
I'd be happy to refile with Conservation. As I said, it to me, it's it's de minimis, but if it's in the decision, we'll we'll abide by it.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. So I think it would be appropriate to have board discussion, just leave the hearing open for right now in case Mr. McGrath needs to address any issues we might have, especially since we've had a few continuations of this project. Does anyone want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. So I I do have issues with the percentage being so close to the fifty percent rule. When you break it down to a monetary amount, which looks like twenty five dollars, basically, a crack in one of the concrete blocks is gonna cost more than that. So I understand it. It's a long process with the building commissioner to actually go through. But without that information from the building commissioner, I am concerned that that foundation blocks will be compromised. It's a very small lot. I'm also concerned, like Ed said, it's so close to the adjoining property. So without that actual information, the building commissioner doesn't want to do it unless we already have a decision or not. Currently, I would not be in favor of this application.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McGrath.
The existing structure is fifteen point two feet at the nearest from the nearest lot line. So the minimum setback in Falmouth is ten feet. We're used to building structures and excavating the foundations within ten feet. So it seems to me that we can easily or a contractor can easily, you know, do the work necessary to reinforce the foundation. It is closer to Nantucket Avenue at seven feet, but I I believe that they could easily dig down next to it, and if necessary, put in temporary shoring at the street line so we don't disturb the soil in the right way. And that's, I mean, this kind of construction does occur a lot in in the heights. They are small lots, but it's not a reason to deny this. That's it's it. There are standard techniques that can occur that will protect the soil outside the lot.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Ed, how do you feel?
Well, as I said earlier, we need to, the the estimate is so close to the to the line, it's almost like somebody worked it, you know? I don't want to accuse anybody of that, but the sure has a look because it looks of it. And I'd say I say if we're gonna approve it, we need to get contingent on the building inspector's input for what is before he issues the building permit.
Thank you, Ed. Mary, any comment?
I don't have a comment.
Thank you, Mary. James, anything? Mr. McGrath?
Since the board is not accepting this unless the building commissioner files some testimony, I I would ask that we I would ask that you continue this hearing. I I guess for a month so that we could see if we can get a written decision from the building.
James, do you have anything else to comment?
Not at this time, no.
All right, just wanted to make sure we got everyone in before we do anything. All right, so Mr. McGrath, you'd like to reach to the building commissioner and try to get a additional information from him?
Yes. And I, I'm supposed to name a date certain, but I don't have your schedule in front of me, so. Uh, but someone tell me what date I should ask for.
Sure, and that schedule is pretty tight, but, uh, we'll try to get you an answer. Uh, Noreen?
Uh, so we'd probably be looking at July ninth at this point in time.
Uh, I, I would ask the board to continue this until July ninth.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I will, but Mr. Chairman, just so you know, so what we would actually be looking for is the finalized worksheet approved by the building commissioner?
Yes. Mr. McGrath, is that, is that what you'd be able to get us?
I'm going to try.
Thank you.
So then I, I would make a motion then to continue the hearing to July ninth?
I'll second.
All right, so a motion to continue to July ninth was made by Bob and seconded by James. We'll do a roll call vote. James?
James Morrissey.
Mary?
Mary, Barry, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. Uh, so that
Thank you very much.
To July ninth. Mr. McGrath, thank you very much. Uh, up next, we have application eight dash twenty, Arthur, forty Lauren Road in North Falmouth. And the voting members on this are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zelinski. And Noreen, my apologies, who do we have for the applicant? Kevin Klauer. Is Attorney Klauer with us? Looks like he's in the attendees list. If either, uh, bonus Adriana can elevate him, please. Attorney Klauer?
Hello, everyone. Uh, am I all set to start, Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Klauer and I am an attorney with Amen Klauer Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, Brian and Kelly Arthur, the owners of Forty Lauren Road. Uh, we've been before you before, so I'd like to offer a brief recap, just to bring everyone up to speed and then address what we've, uh, done since we were last here. Um, this property is located in North Falmouth on a lot of about ten thousand six hundred square feet. An existing two-story, four-bedroom dwelling with a detached garage. Uh, it's non-conforming, a front yard setback, side yard setback and lot coverage by structure, uh, being twenty-five point four percent. Uh, the ridge height is twenty-two, uh, just over twenty-two feet. Uh, the applicant's lived here with their young family and they're looking to make some improvements to address their needs and a better use of the space. The proposed renovations result in a removal of a deck. Uh, that space will be repurposed as a covered patio with the master bedroom above. Uh, the addition ridge height will be, uh, almost exactly the same height as the existing ridge height. Uh, there is a fifth bedroom being added, but there was a five-bedroom septic system that's being proposed and has been approved by the Board of Health. Uh, that approval was submitted to the board by email some weeks ago. Uh, the lot coverage by structure is also being reduced from twenty-five point four percent to twenty-four point eight percent. Um, after the last hearing, we, uh, made a minor modification to the site plan to reflect, uh, the patio being between the, uh, septic system and the house. Uh, there was a note added to the, uh, cross-section essentially. And there was also a question as to the existing garage and whether or not there was habitable space. And there is an office located in that garage. We submitted a floor plan, uh, to that effect. Um, the proposed five-bedroom septic system is sufficient to address the needs of the property. As once you're over eight rooms in a dwelling, you're allowed to, uh, the company, to count the number of rooms and divide by two. Uh, there are, uh, depending how you count it, nine or ten rooms, either way, divided by two, uh, the five-bedroom septic system is sufficient to address those needs. The applicant's proposal, uh, doesn't create any new dimensional non-conformities. It eliminates the non-conforming lot coverage by structure. Uh, there's no impact on the existing side yard or front yard setbacks. Uh, as to the special permits requested for lot coverage by structure being about twenty percent, there's no effect on use and divestment from public way. There's no effect of nitrogen, uh, on coastal payments again, as there is the new Title V system, which has been approved. Uh, there's, uh, uh, we, we submitted the lot coverage comparison worksheet, uh, which did show that this home is very modest relative to the other homes in the neighborhood. As to the garage, that garage has existed since at least nineteen seventy-five, uh, based on error photographs. And the proposal here, uh, essentially, uh, the, it's not substantially more detrimental than what presently exists. There's no new non-conformities being created. There's no impacts to use and divestments. And it more than reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. I believe that we're able to, uh, address the concerns that the board raised. Uh, and I'd ask that you grant the special permit. Of course, I'm happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Klauer. And, uh, once again, if anyone out there has any questions, comments, concerns, uh, please type it into the Zoom webinar chat using your name and address and we will get to it when the time comes. Uh, we'll turn it to board questions. Uh, Ken, any questions?
I do not right now.
Thank you, Ken. Bob, anything?
I, I guess just regarding that, that update with the office space in the garage. So, so does that meet the definition of a bedroom with heat and, uh, look like it had AC?
Yeah, it is, it is heated, um, and would, would likely meet the definition of a bedroom. But again, the septic system as, as approved is, uh, sufficient to address that.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it for right now.
Thank you, Bob. Ed, anything?
No, I don't have any questions.
And Scott?
Yeah, I, I, I keep asking the, the same question over and I keep getting the same answer, but um, in your supplemental, Attorney Klauer, um, you referenced the variance on the, uh, on the SAS. The SAS is the Soil Absorption System, which has nothing to do with the septic tank itself. You made no reference your supplemental about the requirement for a, for a variance for the, for the, uh, distance from the tank to the deck. Now, I asked the other, the, the, the last time you were here, is it a concrete deck? Is it pillars? Is it piers? And I saw your information come back in and you answered the question exactly the same way you answered it the first meeting. I didn't get any more information out of it. I, if, if you look at this plan and it's on piers and that pier is three feet off the side of that sidewall of that tank, the way it's set. If that deck is on a patio, if they're changing that wood deck to a patio, it becomes a slab. Massachusetts state law requires ten feet from a slab or a foundation. I just need to know what it's going to be.
Well, tell you what I can do, Mr. Zelinski. Uh, the engineer, uh, who had this project approved with the Board of Health is in the audience. Uh, Matt Costa, if we could bring him in as, uh, a panelist, I think he might be able to address your question more specifically than I can.
Through the chair.
Thank you. Mr. Costa, are you with us? Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Here, here you answer you.
Thank you. For the record, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering. Um, yeah, there's, uh, regardless of what the patio is on, there's no setback requirements to a patio. Be a setback requirement to a slab foundation for a structure. Um, there's no variance needed for the septic tank.
So, so how, how is the second floor supported?
There's, there's posts that would come down and be supported, um, by a footing. Uh, just as if there was a structure for, that was on, uh, sonar tubes. There's no setback to sonar tubes. There's no setback to that patio.
Okay, so the pa- the patio is going to be on concrete?
It may be. It may be bluestone. There is no setback to the patio. Uh, it's, this has been approved by the Board of Health. So this is, this is not a zoning issue. This is a Board of Health issue. This has been approved.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. And I'm not seeing anything in the webinar chat as far as public comment goes, but if anyone does have anything, just type, uh, your name, address and whatever, uh, question, comment, concern you might have. Are there any follow-up questions from the board?
Uh, just for the record, could, could, could either, um, Ashley or, um, you know, uh, Kevin, share the analysis of, uh, uh, nearby homes and their coverage?
Uh, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Here with me for one second here, please. And now, what it says is, uh, the lot comparison looks at the thirty-two dwellings that are within three hundred feet of this premises. Of those thirty-two dwellings, uh, thirty actually had larger gross floor areas and twenty-one had larger footprints. Um, the proposal, uh, even, uh, the, the, this dwelling even as proposed would still be among the smallest houses within the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm convinced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at this time? All right, and once again, I'm not seeing, uh, any public comment in the webinar chat. Is the board satisfied with everything that we've received?
I am.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the hearing. That motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Bob Zelinski, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. And how would the board like to proceed?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, maybe just for discussion. So, um, you know, it has come that there is an office in, in, in some kind of a sleeping area in that garage, and I understand it is covered by the s- by the septic system. Um, if this is approved, I just want to make there's, sure there's some kind of condition in there so that that does not become a separate livable unit. I don't even know if there's ever been permits pulled for the work that's been done in there since we thought it was unfinished space originally. So I don't know how that actually gets written up in the condition. Um, but I think it also needs to be in the findings that it is, you know, we just found out there's an office space in there and so then the future, someone doesn't apply for two structures on site previously existing, et cetera. So, um, that's one concern that I would like taken up in the conditions.
Thank you for your concerns, Bob. I, I think we can appropriately condition it, given that information.
So does that mean Bob's making the motion?
I didn't vote for that.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a, a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion to approve with conditions. Uh, start off with findings. Bob, do you want to get us started?
Uh, let's see, uh, two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E. Um, there is a septic system that has been approved by the Health Department. Um, that would cover the, uh, main house and also the section that's being used as an office under their criteria that's in the garage. Um, the, the, uh, testimony was that the second floor will be supported by posts on a patio. Uh, we were not told if it is going to be
On footings, I think.
On, on footings.
The patio is kind of independent.
It was just kind of iffy if it's, uh, you know, bluestone or rather concrete, that those supports will be on.
No, I, I think the supports would be on concrete. The patio might be on bluestone. That's how I understand.
Right. You made reference to sonar tubes.
Yes, most of the other stuff is going to be conditions.
Well, don't forget to find that they're, they're reducing lot coverage to get below twenty-five percent, which I think is, from the zoning perspective, is one of the more significant.
And that the bulk calculations were submitted during the meeting.
Did you want to make any findings regarding the garage to support conditions, Bob?
Uh, we were informed that the garage contains an office space that would meet a bedroom definition. Um, there also seems to be air conditioning and a heat pump out there, maybe and a bath because it's tied into the new septic system. But that it's not being used as separate livable space, just an office.
All right. Uh, want to move on to conditions and if we have any other findings, we can circle back to them?
Yeah, uh, no direction of stormwater, two butters or the private way. Requirement of dry wells, a minimum of ten feet from the property line. Um, I'd like to have a review by the assessors department, interior in both the house and the garage. And I guess as far as the garage, would you, I mean, if it's a bedroom, it is, I guess, habitable, but not separate living area. So how would you? Noreen, do you have a, um, suggestion for a condition on the garage?
So I think they can obviously have usable space over the garage. I think what you could do is continue, condition that it not be a separate habitable unit.
So, so, so right now, it appears there's an office, a bath, there's heat, it is private. It already exists. We didn't get anything submitted that there were permits or anything that finished it off.
Or you could at this point in time, require that there be no kitchen because they've not demonstrated that they're intending to use it as a separate space and that it can't be separately rented.
All right, and we've done that in past. We've had conditions, no, no kitchen, and I, I forgot the exact language that we used before.
So is it also possible, if there were no permits pulled to finish that area, that they get permits for it? Safety, just safety-wise?
Guess you could condition that if there's not permits to finish the space above the garage, that it be subject to review by the building department.
So that I, oh, so then I would do that, subject to the garage space being reviewed by the building departments, just to make sure there's required permits for the work that exists?
Noreen, would they have to come back before us if they, uh, to amend the special permit if they Norim, would they have to come back before us if they, to amend the special permit if they enclose that patio?
Yes.
Any other conditions, Bob?
I just, per plans, I think that we already got that.
I think we did.
Let me just check the referrals real quick. Yep, no, that's fine.
Any other findings? All right, so for a good, we have our findings and conditions, the motion to approve with conditions was made by Bob and seconded by Ken. We'll do a roll call vote, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, Bob made the motion to take, as part of his motion at the beginning of the evening to take application seventy-eight dash nineteen Buzzards Bay Forty Shore Road, or Shore Street, rather, at the end. So that would mean we're moving on to new hearings. We have application twenty-five dash twenty, CMM Ventures LLC, three thirty-five Shore Street in Falmouth. And the voting members on this would be the regular voting members.
Is the applicant connected? So application.
It's, it's attorney Clower.
Okay, so application number twenty-five dash twenty. Elizabeth Butters is on behalf of the Office of the Board of Appeals, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that CMM Ventures LLC of Reading, Mass has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot by, lot coverage by structures on subject property known as three thirty-five Shore Street, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Shore Street and Surf Drive are public rights in this area. Boyer Road is a private right of way in this area. The plan shows relocating the driveway to Boyer Road, this will not require a driveway permit from engineering. Note, a portion of the driveway appears to fall on the abutting sixteen Boyer Road property. B, the plans do not show abandonment of the existing driveway on Shore Street, we request that any approval include a condition that the applicant seeks a permit from the DPW Engineering Division and post any required bond to close the existing driveway, including sidewalk and curbing. It appears that this site falls within the resource areas offers, therefore we defer erosion control measures to the Falmouth Conservation Commission. However, as part of the permit to close Shore Street, we will require reconstruction entrance and silt sack installed on the drainage system in Shore Street and Surf Drive. Note, there are additional stormwater structures located in the street not shown on these plans. If formal plans are developed by the Conservation Commission, we recommend that these details be included on those plans. Proposed driveway abandonment work, a portion of the project is located within the town right of way and should be included in any conservation permitting. We will not issue a permit for the abandonment work without proof of approval from Conservation Commission, either administratively or through an order of conditions. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, butters or public rights of way. We recommend including the following condition, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. And five, with the relocation of the driveway, this parcel's address needs to be changed. After consulting with the Falmouth Fire and Rescue, it was determined that this property, as shown on the proposed plans, should have a Boyer Road address. Falmouth Fire and Rescue has requested that the number be posted at the end of the driveway, as well as on the structure in a location that is visible from the street. The available numbers are even numbers between and including two and twelve. We request that any approval include a condition that the applicant seek an address change from the Engineering Division. From Amy Lowell. Looks like the proposed new house has four bedrooms, which is allowed by right in the sewer service this area, so no flow neutral bylaw variance is required. As with any demolition rebuild in a sewer area, the contractor must expose cut and cap the sewer line on the property to prevent debris getting into the sewer line during demolition and construction. The wastewater division should be notified so we can witness the cut and cap and get new ties to the sewer lateral. Well before construction begins, a property owner representative will need to apply for sewer connection modification permit. The sewer connection permit application involves providing a sewer connection plan for review and paying a fifty dollar fee. From planning, no comment. And regarding historic, the applicant filed an application, a certificate of appropriateness, and it's scheduled when this was done for the May agenda. Health Department properties on town sewer, they defer to wastewater. We have in the file the Falmouth Conservation Commission order of conditions. Assessors, no comment. Fire Department, no other comment, and there was previously discussed with engineering.
And before we start, I did see a public comment in the webinar chat regarding another application that's on Shore, Shore Street tonight. So just to be clear for everyone out there, and that comment will be written to the record at the appropriate time. Right now, we are hearing the application twenty-five dash twenty, CCM Ventures LLC, three thirty-five Shore Street in Falmouth. The application for forty Shore Street will be heard later in the night. We took the application out of order and it's just coincidence that we have back-to-back applications on Shore Street tonight. But thank you to the person who did write that in, and we will make that announcement during the public hearing for the other Shore Street at the appropriate time. So Attorney Clower, I believe you have this application as well, is that correct?
Do, thank you. Again, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Comment Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, a brief note on that. Time of the application was made, title was held by CMM Ventures LLC. It has since been deeded to Christine M. DiRigilio, trustee of the Christine M. Moynihan Trust. So just, just a note, but I do represent the applicants, Christine M. DiRigilio. They are the owner of three thirty-five Shore Street, and they're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing single-family dwelling. This property is located at the corner of Shore Street and Surf Drive, right on the corner, actually, on a lot of, just over eight thousand square feet, eight thousand eighty-eight square feet. Located in a residential C zoning district, and it's located entirely within the VE fifteen, the velocity flood zone. The applicants have owned this property for a few years, but they found that the existing footprint and layout is inadequate, they're growing family, and seeking to make alterations. As it exists, it's a two-story, four-bedroom dwelling with a footprint of fifteen hundred and forty-five square feet. It's non-conforming to, I don't know if you want to call it the side yard or the rear yard setback, it's actually zero, it actually encroaches onto the abutting parcel. It otherwise complies with front yard setback, and the existing lot coverage by structures is nineteen point one percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right. Given the location in the velocity zone, the renovations that the applicant would seek to make would require compliance with the flood zone standards. As such, they really don't have an option but to raise and rebuild the existing structure. The rebuilt structure must elevate so that all mechanicals and the joints supporting the first floor are at least two feet above the flood zone elevation, which in this case is elevation seventeen. What is proposed is just a slightly larger footprint, they're increasing the footprint by about a hundred square feet. The proposed ridge height is thirty-four feet, ten inches, and they're improving the side yard setback from zero feet to four point seven feet. They really can't come any closer to Shore, Shore Street or Surf Drive due to Conservation Commission issues and setbacks to the resource areas. The lot coverage by structure as proposed is twenty point seven percent, which is allowable by special permit as lot coverage up to twenty-five percent is allowed. Otherwise, we comply with the front yard and the rear yard setbacks, as well as a lot coverage by structures paving and parking. The proposed, the proposed structure would also have four bedrooms. Due to the non-conforming side yard setback and the lot coverage by structure being over twenty percent, this does require a special permit under Section two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Two forty-three C states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty dash two sixteen, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the area. The result of the proposal here is that the existing side yard, non-conforming setback is improved. There's no new dimensional non-conformities created, and it's not a detriment to the neighborhood, and in fact, due to the compliance with the flood zone construction standards, represents an overall benefit. As the lot coverage would still exceed twenty percent, we do need that special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E. And in that case, the board has to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the size and height of structures in the area, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact of views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, regarding the height, it's clear that the structure that's proposed is larger than what exists. However, the footprints essentially the same, it's only a modest increase of about, like you said, a hundred square feet. And much of the increase, or all the increase in size is necessitated by the requirement to raise the building twelve feet above the existing grade. The first floor is going to be almost entirely supported by pilings. The only enclosed area is the area of the mudroom and stairs, which is less than two hundred square feet. With regard to the views, vistas, and effects of shadow, I mean, it's clear this will be a visible structure and will have some shadowing effects, but the views from public ways are not negatively impacted. And in fact, it's in line with many of the nearby structures that have likewise had to elevate to meet the flood zone standards. The shadowing effects are mitigated by this property's location, it's at the intersection of Surf Drive and Shore Street with substantial road area to the south and east, which are unaffected essentially. And the dwelling directly to the west of this is the applicant's brother. There is no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, as the property is sewed and has the same number of bedrooms as at present. Regarding the size and height of the structure, we did submit a table showing the lot size, gross building area, footprint, percentage of lot coverage by structure of the twenty-eight dwellings within three hundred feet. The gross building area was determined by the town of Falmouth assessors records. Of those, of those structures, I'm sorry, I said twenty-three structures, of those twenty-three structures, ten percent, ten have higher percentage of lot coverage by structure, nineteen have larger footprints, and nineteen have larger gross building areas. This as proposed remains one of the more modest homes in the area in terms of gross building area and footprint. It's safe to say that this is certainly not out of character with the neighborhood. The board's asked to consider these issues, and also whether the proposal has adverse effects that outweigh the beneficial effects. Here, we have an improvement to the property, compliance with the flood zone standards, an improvement of an existing non-conformity. In addition, the applicant has proposed relocating the existing driveway off of Surf, off of Shore Street on De Boyer Road, which is a private way which they have rights to. Its present location is near to a very busy and I think oftentimes dangerous intersection. There's no real adverse effect to this proposal, again, a number of beneficial effects, it meets the standards of two forty dash two sixteen. I've said this before at other hearings, but I think it's important to note. This is, this is what we want from homeowners, we should want compliance with flood zone standards and requirements. In many ways, we need that compliance, it's important for the health and resiliency of the town and the coast. I think the applicants have taken every effort to design a responsible, efficient, and attractive home that fits with the area, the concerns and the needs. For these reasons and given these considerations, I'd ask the board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Now, once again, if there's any questions, comments, concerns from the public regarding this application, three thirty-five Shore Street, go ahead and type that into the webinar chat using your name and address, and we will address it shortly. I'll turn it to board questions at this time, and Bob, do you have any questions?
Just one question, have you had the meeting with historic yet, or if not, when?
We had applied in order to be on their May agenda, but they had a backlog of activity. So they moved us to the June hearing, which they've since elected not to hold. So there, I believe we're going to be on the July agenda for that.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob, Ken, any questions?
Yeah, so could you confirm the height of the current structure and the proposed height of the new structure?
The current structure is about twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two feet. It's, the height of the proposed structure is thirty-four feet, ten inches.
Does that include the cupola?
No, it is not, that's specifically not including, included in building, the building height definition.
There any particular reason you need that?
I think, I think it breaks up the roof line, I think it's an attractive design, I think it lets in light to that second floor, but I think it's also in character with the neighborhood.
Well, that extends your height to what?
I, I don't know, because it's, it's, again, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I understand. Looks like you'll be up over forty feet there.
Don't believe it's that much.
Mr. Clower, you said that the cupola adds light to the house, is that actually a skylighted area into the house itself?
No, I, I've just been corrected by that, actually. That is not a skylighted area, it is, it is, it is a decorative feature.
I personally, you know, I, I understand the need to elevate, but you're already at the height limit, I don't see the need to add that. The roof line's pretty nice the way it is, frankly.
Any other questions, Ken?
Nope.
Thank you. Ed, anything?
No, I don't have any questions, I think it's going to look next, looks like it's not in a hole right now.
Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Attorney, I'm sorry, Scott?
Am I on this, am I voting this?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, if I may, I just want to reserve for board discussion. I don't have any questions, I have some comments though.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
So Attorney Clower, just, just to make sure, so it's the proposed height of the building, even with the FEMA rigs with it going up, but minus the cupola, it's thirty-four, ten?
Correct.
And in terms of other features on the property, I'm, I'm looking south, it's, I guess you could call it a berm towards Surf Drive, will that be remaining?
Yeah, I think the applicants would certainly want that to remain, and that was part of, whatever's on this plan was part of what was approved by the Conservation Commission.
Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, seeing none.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Attorney Clower.
If, if, it sounds like there's some, potentially some questions or comments, if we could keep this open just so I can respond, if need be.
Thank you, and I think that's best practice these days, meeting virtually, it avoids a couple of roll calls. Thank you. And I think that's best practice these days, meeting virtually. Uh, it avoids a couple of roll call votes, so uh, we'll leave the hearing open. And Scott, you indicated that you wanted to have some discussion about this project. Do you wanna start this off?
I really like this project. I spent some time on it. Um, this house would need extensive repair either way. So the construction aspect and and the the um the nuisance of the construction would have taken place sooner or later anyway because the foundation and the supports that this house had were in poor shape. Um, the berm is gonna remain, so it doesn't affect sightlines from the corner anyway. I really, really like it. I think it's in keeping. I think by lifting it up and getting that driveway off of Sur- off of Shore Street is a benefit. Um, I I just, I just wanted to commend whoever drew these plans. I really like this project. And tha- that's why I had no questions, Gavin. It was just your comment for me.
We, we appreciate that. Thank you. I think the applicants have worked uh very hard.
And Attorney Clower, just to, just to confirm, so that property does have rights off of Boyer Road, so any sort of construction vehicles or anything like that, that can, they can gain access through Boyer Road and stay offshore street?
That, that's correct. And also, uh, just while I'm thinking of it, um, the, the driveway does encroach. However, the applicants have an easement to that portion of uh the abutting lot.
So I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Clower, uh, encroaching there?
Uh, I'll share my screen. Yeah, I'll share my screen briefly. Um, you'll see here where the hand is, that's uh, that crosses the property line onto this triangular piece. Uh, but the applicants do have an easement over that portion of the uh of the abutting lot.
I will say it's a, it's a uniquely shaped lot. I don't know what gave rise to that. All right, uh, any other comments from the board before we close the hearing?
No, actually, I I like the project too, but I I think the moving of that driveway is absolutely fantastic, that you have a blind turn on Surf Drive. And I can't imagine that somebody hasn't gotten in an accident at some point pulling out of that driveway, so I think that's a big plus. Uh, we do have that ridge height at that thirty-four, ten. I do have Ken's concern about the cupola. It is a really nice design of the house. I don't think the addition of the detailed cupola um really takes away much if you took that out. And I would, I would go with actually just the roof height of the thirty-four, ten and just not have the decorative features above it.
Uh, the, the applicants have, have sent a note saying that they're, they're certainly open to a, to a smaller cupola than that, if that, that's something the board would consider. Maybe that's something, if if the board is willing to consider that, maybe that's something that could be approved administratively.
I just feel like, uh, you know, they're at thirty-four, ten. And a lot of the, some of the houses are that high, but a lot of them are, you know? And it's just, this is gonna be an issue as, as more and more houses elevate. We just don't want a bunch of towering structures where, I mean, it's gratuitous. It's not necessary for the, for the building. The, it looks fine. It's a great roof line. The way it's broken up already, I, I mean, I agree with everything everyone said. I just think that particular feature kind of, you know, flies in the face of our zoning regulation on building height.
We're not gonna try to snatch uh defeat out of the jaws of victory. The clients have let me know that they can live without that, so.
Okay. In that case, I, if, if everyone's ready, I'm happy to make a motion to close.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Sounds like uh we're closing the hearing then. Motion was made by Ken, and uh I'll give the second to Scott. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kier, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the hearing is closed. What would be the board's pleasure?
I'm also happy to make a motion in favor.
All right, I'll give that to Ken with the motion in favor.
A second.
And second by Bob. Condition, I'm sorry, findings?
Findings, so we're improving the side yard setback, uh uh substantially, we're improving the access. Uh, we're meeting the FEMA regs, those are, which improves usability uh and safety on the site. Um, and we have really just a very tiny uh increase in lot coverage beyond that uh twenty percent limit, so it's, I would almost say de minimis, frankly. Uh, but uh, so any, those are my finding.
Yeah, so then pop in a two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash two sixteen. Uh, mark that this is a raisin rebuild at elevation seventeen. Uh, testimony has given that a portion of the proposed new driveway in Boyer Road exceeds the lot. They do have um rights to that area, so that it's not an issue. Um, they will be abandoning the existing driveway on Shore Street um and relocating that to Boyer Road. The house at that point will also have to have uh a new address. Erosion and sediment control. Uh, elevation is shown at thirty-four feet, ten inches. Uh, lot coverage by structure is twenty point seven. They submitted a lot calculation seat, and that's within the range.
And compared to other homes in the neighborhood, it's actually still uh a modest structure.
In the application, the applicant has uh applied to um Historic Commission for a certificate of appropriateness and is on the agenda for July.
And I guess one other finding, the applicants indicated a willingness to remove the cupola, which uh goes beyond thirty-five feet. Then for conditions, I would ask that uh, A, we remove the cupola, uh but B, maybe we should have an ASPL just to check the height.
Yeah, so where, where it's thirty-four feet, ten and a quarter inches, we would require a height certificate at framing to be submitted to the zoning board.
Okay. Good way to do it.
Obvi- obviously, they would probably have to have some kind of police detail during um demolition and reconstruction on that corner or some kind of way to um monitor that traffic for safety anyway. It's during the idwes parts of that, right?
Yeah, correcting it in all um, all construction vehicles and the materials to be kept on site or at least in that private drive area.
And I think with their demo permit uh requires an offense anyway, so that's, that's, that's gonna be under their demo permit.
And then they'll have to meet everything with CONCOM, all the engineering comments. Uh, also, with the um abandonment of the existing driveway in Shore Street, they will be required to do a bond with the DPW. Will be required to have erosion.
If they're on sewerage.
Uh, it is subject to the certificate of appropriateness that must be obtained by the Historic Commission.
Yeah, I don't think they're on the sewer, are they?
That was the testimony of the uh, the applicant's representative.
Yeah, they are on sewer, and actually, we should add to findings that because they're on sewer and they're at four bedrooms, they uh, the flow neutral bylaw is not triggered according to the wastewater superintendent.
That should certainly go in the finding.
The tank may be filled already. I'm not, I lift the cover to check, but uh, it is great.
Not usually what we do on site.
And unfollowing the um, unfollowing the order of conditions from CONCOM, it's the conditions that were dated five thirteen twenty. They also gonna need to post the address per that section ninety-nine one. They'll need to confirm the house number, um choosing what was listed anywhere between even numbers between two and twelve. And they'll have to um do that between engineering and fire and rescue. The laws have to apply for a modification permit, like you said, on the septic for the connection, the reconnection on the town sewer. They'll have to coordinate that with the wastewater division.
Bob, do we have hours of operation, uh, uh, construction and demolition?
No, so we should put those in, and I think we usually use the um No, we, what do we usually use? I know we don't do Sundays, but
So typically, with any conditions you put in, it's seven AM to seven P, Monday through Saturday. No Sundays or holidays, absent emergencies.
So include that.
And dust control for the demo.
All right, anything else for either findings or conditions?
That's a lot. Did Maureen get it all?
I have the list.
She's nodding in the affirmative, so I think she has it. Uh, so those motion to approve uh with conditions was made by Ken and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Ed?
Yeah, Dan Kier, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck.
Uh, I'm on next too, so they can just keep me here.
All right, stand by. Up next, we have application twenty-six dash twenty, Hunt, sixteen Clinton Ave and Thalmith.
So being all person, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify the Terrence H. Hunt and Mary T. Hunt of Needham Mass apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Thalmud to enclose the existing porch and construct in addition at the rear of the dwelling on subject property known as sixteen Clinton Ave, Thalmith Mass. For referrals uh from engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Clinton Ave is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way requires filing a permit with Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town departments. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. The site plans and architectural plans do not appear to match. The bulkhead appears to be in different locations. We defer to the board if the plan should be revised to match. Uh, from CONCOM, they did uh receive a determination of applicability decision. She was in favor. Uh, from Health Department, four bedroom proposed septic system appears to meet title five. Applicant will need a septic system installation permit prior to obtaining a building permit. Assessors, no comment. Fire department, no comment. And that's all we have.
And once again, if there's any public comment for this, just go ahead and type in the webinar chat your name, address, question, comment, or a concern, and we will get to it when the time comes. Attorney Clower?
Evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I am an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Thalmud. And I represent the applicants, Terrence and Mary Hunt, uh, the owners of sixteen Clinton Avenue. Uh, sixteen Clinton Avenue is located near the intersection of Clinton Avenue and Shore Street, the western end of Clinton. Uh, really in the outskirts of the Belvedere Plains neighborhood. It's a, it's a dense residential community. Uh, this specific property is on a lot of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine square feet, and it's located in the residential C zoning district. The, the existing dwelling is a four-bedroom home with a footprint of sixteen hundred and eighty-nine square feet. The existing ridge height is eighteen feet, seven inches. It's non-conforming as to side yard setback being nine point seven feet, which tennis required. Uh, the lot coverage by structure as existing is fourteen percent. The applicants are seeking to modify that existing dwelling. Uh, they're gonna create an addition and a deck at the rear of the property uh and add a new dormer to the front of the second floor. Uh, the addition uh is a sunroom uh and a replacement of an existing patio with a deck. They purchased this property in January of last year, and having spent about a year and a half there, they've identified some areas that they need to improve in order to maximize the space and make it useful for their family. Uh, as I noted, the addition is a sunroom and a deck, so there's no additional bedroom being created. Uh, first floor will have expanded living space, which is more functional for them. Uh, the existing non-conforming setback is not affected. There's no new non-conformity create, created, and the ridge height remains the same. Due to the existing non-conforming side yard setback, this does require a special permit under two forty dash three C. Uh, that section again states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider two forty dash two sixteen, whether or not that alteration creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, uh, the existing setbacks remain unchanged. There's no new non-conformity created. There's no impact of views and vistas, and it is consistent with the other homes in the area. There's no detriments to this project relative to the existing structure. Frankly, I don't, I don't think there's any detriments at all. Uh, it will not have any adverse effects. Um, and it meets the standards of two forty dash two sixteen. Based on this information, I'd ask that the board grant the special permit, and I'd be glad to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Uh, we'll turn it to board questions, and the voting members on this are the normal voting members. Uh, Bob, do you have anything?
Uh, no questions. Um, just a comment, just so you know that when I went there, all the bounds and back for the addition had been moved, so I'm just gonna go by the plan, but out there, it showed it was only eight-foot addition, which I thought was weird. So I don't know if it got moved sometime, whether they were doing some kind of construction over there or not.
Ken?
No, um, I think everything's fine. It's right at twenty percent lot coverage, I guess. Is that correct? That's it for me.
Thank you. Mary?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ed, anything? We have you sideways, by the way, Ed.
I'm sorry, what?
We have you sideways.
Oh.
Oh.
The uh I'm the right side up here. See, uh, what's a, good question for Kevin. What's all the construction activity going on there like today?
Uh, they had some leaks in the house, actually, and were they, they were fixing, fixing the front of the house while they were waiting for this uh application.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Ed. And I don't have any questions myself, and I am not seeing any uh public comment in the webinar chat. Any follow-up questions from the board? Seeing none, how would the board like to proceed? Motion closed by Ken. Is there a second, perhaps, by Bob?
Yeah, a second.
All right. Roll call vote, Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kier, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Who's the voting members on this hearing?
Uh, the, the regular voting members. So that would, that would include yourself, Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Making motion in to approve the project, Scott?
No, to close.
Oh, I'm s- I'm s- I'm sorry, Scott. I missed you there. All right. So now the mo- now the hearing's closed. My apologies, Scott.
No, no problem.
All right. Now, how would the board like to proceed?
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Bob.
Second.
And second.
Second.
All right, findings?
They're doing it in addition to the back of the property to enhance utilization. The side yard setback is 9.5 feet. That won't change, and there's no new non-conformity created. 240-3C, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. I had noted in the engineering referrals, they had a question regarding a change that needed to be done on plans. I did notice that there is a correspondence in May 6th that says that there's an attached to the site plan entitled Site and Septic Plan, and that one does correct discrepancies between the building plans and the original site plan, where the bulkhead locations did not match. So they already met that.
There is a significant septic upgrade there too, that might...
Yep, they're doing a, and it's going to be a four-bedroom. The height to the peak is 18, 1 and 3/4. They're going to be removing the patio and relocating the bulkhead and placing in expanded sunroom and a deck. Sunroom addition is 17 by 20. The lot coverage will go from 14 to 20%. Total lot coverage, 23 to 26.
Anything else for findings?
No, I think that's it.
All right, conditions?
So per those revised plans, they'll need to do dry wells for any of the new roof area. Regarding the Health Department. The applicant will need the septic system installation prior to obtaining a building permit. All work construction and vehicles to be on site. I think that's pretty much it. One of the easier ones.
All right. Anything else from anyone? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions by Bob and seconded by Ken. Do roll call vote, Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Did you call me?
Yes.
Sorry, there was a motorcycle drove by. And Forman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and at this point in time, would everyone like a five-minute break? Yeah. All right, we will take a short break, and we will be back. And I will make a motion to our open meeting agenda item number two. Anyone want to second that?
Second.
By Bob, roll call vote, Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ed? Ed, you're muted. Still muted, Ed.
Is that better?
We got you.
Okay. Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the Board administrative approval is to allow windows installed on the second floor of the detached room.
So we have an administrative request for a change for a garage that you approved, and Mr. Roggiani is in attendance as analyst, if you have questions for him.
Maureen, my understanding is this had to do with the building code?
Well, so the applicant had originally proposed to build office space above the garage without windows, but subsequently, I shouldn't speak for him, opted to have a little bit of window space to have some sunlight, but not to create habitable space.
Okay. Mr. Roggiani, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. My name is Gabriel Roggiani. I'm the owner of 179 Jones Road. So when I first started the project last year, I was told that the second floor was, could be considered habitable space if it had windows. I went to the Health Department, and I went to the Building Commissioner, and we found this agreement that if I didn't put any windows upstairs, it wouldn't be habitable. It wouldn't be considered habitable. I came to you because my building was on a property, was on my neighbor's property, so I had to actually remove the foundation and move it out to make it more conforming. So it wouldn't be on their property. It was built in 1926 originally, so I removed the windows. But then, as we're building the building, and we're building the second floor, we realized that the design of the second floor space, which is just a storage space, only allows for a ceiling of 611. So when I went back to the Health Department, and I told them it's only 611, Scott, the Health Director said that at that point, being 611, I wasn't infringing on any laws, because it wasn't habitable at all, ever. So I didn't have to go and remove the windows. I could have had windows. The only other thing was that the windows needed to be less than 8% of the total square footage. And the windows I'm proposing are actually small windows. They're only 32. And the windows I'm proposing are actually small windows, they're only thirty two by thirty six. I have three of them and then I have a very small one in a corner. Because of framing, that it's only going to be seventeen by nineteen, I believe, which is well below the eight percent, eight percent glass wise compared to the flooring. I wanted to go this way to begin with, but everybody assumed that the space above would have been more than seven four. When we framed it, we stopped because we realized that the architect had actually, you know, spected for six eleven. So it's never going to be habitable space, it's never going to become a bedroom and it's not supposed to be, it wasn't supposed to be to begin with. So I'm trying to get the windows back because if without them, I have to do all kinds of. You know, I actually have to do a lot of electrical work putting a heat and you know, air exchangers up there and I have to put a lot of lighting. It has to be artificial lighting, a lot of energy spent just because, you know, not having a window that I can open or, or the light that can come in. So I'm asking to put the windows back in since I'm not going against any code, any code violations. It's not going to be habitable space and never will be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so, so I just have one question, so this was a, this was a, this was a complete new construction, correct? You took the old garage down and built a new structure?
Yes, I had to, yeah.
So on the original plans that you submitted?
Yes.
What was the original height on the second floor?
Well, it's, it's six eleven, it's just nobody noticed it. It's actually six eleven, nobody noticed it, the builder said to me, why aren't we putting any, the framer, the person who was framing, he said, why aren't we putting any window up here? I said, because it could be considered habitable space and he said, it's six eleven, it can be. And we looked at each other like, I don't know, I had no idea, you know, I just. I was asked not to make it habitable, therefore take the windows out, but I didn't know what habitable meant in, you know, in consideration to the height of the ceiling. And he said, look, this is never going to be habitable, it's six eleven, the habitable space is seven four. So the reason not a question about being habitable, it's just a storage space. And so I asked Scott and he said to me, yeah, absolutely, I wouldn't have questioned it if I knew it was six eleven. And therefore, you know, basically I'm stepping back saying, okay, so if it's six eleven, am I okay to put windows? And Scott said, absolutely, for as long as you're not also, you're not doing it for more than eight percent of the square footage, which is not. It's four small windows. So I'm trying to comply with everybody so I can have some, some windows up there and it's still not habitable because the height of the ceiling is so low.
So that would be just storage and materials, you won't be doing an office desk, any of that stuff upstairs, just storage and materials?
I'm not going to have any living space up there.
So you won't be using it as an office, correct?
Well, when you consider an office being mean, getting somebody there, no, that nobody's going to be coming to me as an office, no. I'm not going to have that. It's not going to be a place of business, it's not going to be an office space as a place of business.
So, so besides your storage of, let's say, just plain materials. What else will you be using for, just desk space for yourself or?
Correct, it's just for me, yes, nothing else, there's not going to be any, any type of living space. I'm going to use it, I have, I have a very small house, I only have, you know, I only have a, a small office space in my living room. And I'm probably going to move this desk and my computer there, but it's not going to be a place where I'm going to have clients coming over, it's not office. No way commercial is no way usable that way.
So Mr. Chairman, I don't have the decision in front of me, but I'm just going by recollection from the original hearing. And I thought at the original hearing, the concern the board had was that first it was storage and materials and then it might be just desk space for himself. And then we were concerned with, well, if you're going to start using it as an office, would somebody be staying there, would you need a means of address? And that's what we got into, so I don't have an issue with just storage area.
Yep.
But if it starts becoming workspace, that's why we took the windows out.
We took the windows out because it was considered a bedroom. Because the height of the ceiling could have been a bedroom, but it's not. So the, the consideration of taking the windows out came from the Health Department. It didn't come from the fact that I was going to use it as a second dwelling, it came from the Health Department because I wasn't complying. According to, if it was spec higher than seven four or a seven four plus windows. It could have been considered a bedroom, so they told me to compromise and take the windows out so that I could use it. But it would never become a bedroom and I wouldn't be, you know, there wouldn't be any questions on, is it living space? It's not, it's only six eleven, it's a very low ceiling. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob, any other questions from the board?
None here.
Thank you, Ed. Scott, Mary, Kim, anything?
What, what do we, what do we classify in the definition of habitable as? I, I wasn't here for that, I'm just, it's a general question. Is habitable not sleeping but working? Or is habitable the opposite of storage? I mean, how are we classifying it in this instance? What is habitable?
So what I was told by the Health Department is habitable is a certain amount of square footage with a ceiling seven four. And some heat that could make it a possible bedroom. People would be able to live in that space. Or a certain amount of square footage with so much glass space that would also make it, you know, a place where you would want to stay in. But I'm not, I'm not doing any of that. But that's, but that's what it is.
Because if, if it was seven four and it had a closet and it had heat and it had everything else, would it be habitable or wouldn't it?
Yes, it would be.
Even though the ceiling was seven four?
At seven four or above, the Health Department considers it habitable. Anything below seven four and it's not habitable, it's like a, basically it's not different from having a basement with basement windows. Uh, you know, it just, it's, it's just above the garage, but it's a, you know, it's a low ceiling, it's got a couple of windows and I'm not intending to make it into an apartment or a bedroom or any living quarters of any type. But I'm going to use it, I want to use it, it's a space that is available to me, I want to use it.
Do you meet cus, do you meet clients at the desk you're at right now?
No, 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 I'm a plumber, I, I go out, I, I have a van. You know, I just, so I don't have, I don't have any intention of having anybody on my property, it's, it's a residential house. And I, and I don't have clients in my, you know, I do the plumbing in their house. So it's not, you know, I don't do anything like that, I'm not a builder. So I just, it's, I like to move, basically what I'm doing here is moving my desk from my living room of my, of my nine hundred square foot home. To, you know, the, the little storage piece above.
You'll do takeoffs and review plans for jobs and stuff up there?
That's it, so that I don't have it in my living room, that's all.
That's all I have, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, counter Mary?
I have absolutely no problem with this whatsoever.
Very good, thank you, Kim. And I don't have any sort of issue with it either. Anyone like to make a motion?
So we are moving to approve, approve a modification. Is that what we're doing?
It's a Board Administrative Approval, Kim.
Yep. Uh, so move to authorize administrative approval of this change in. Need to cite that.
I'll cite it.
Yeah, to allow windows to be installed on the second floor of the detached.
Yes. Uh, but I'm just looking for the case number and I don't see it.
I don't see it either, Norrie, could you help us out or maybe, Bob, I'm not sure if you have it?
I don't, I don't have it.
I'm sure we can find it later and add it in to the written decision.
Seventy, seventy-three nineteen.
Modification of seven, administrative approval to add windows to the decision seventy-three dash nineteen, that's it.
All right, is there a second? Second by Ken, so the motion approved was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Scott?
Kozlowski, aye.
Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Mary? Ooh, Ed?
Mary Berry, aye.
Thank you, Mary, Ed? Ed Van Kuren, aye. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ Harry, aye, so that is approved as requested.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right, up next we have application twenty-seven dash twenty, seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC. Uh, and the location of the property is seven ninety-seven Main Street Falmouth. And we do have, okay, we do have the applicant's representative. Uh, so Bob, if you'd like to read this in.
So application number twenty-seven dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the National Laws. You were hereby notified at seven nine seven Main Street LLC of East Falmouth, Mass. Is applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash. Two forty G one B of the Code of Falmouth. Construct in addition to an existing building and convert to restaurant with three apartments located above. On subject property known as seven nine seven Main Street Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Uh, from engineering, there are actually. Pages of comments, does everybody have the engineering referrals? I can break it down.
If you could, if you could, Bob.
So it says where this site has been reviewed multiple times. With a planning and zoning board of appeals and revised numerous times below is a summary of relevant comments. That remain open from these past reviews followed by new comments. Based on correspondence with the planning board, the submitted plan was revised after our last review to them and was not reviewed by the engineering division. Comments that remained open across multiple reviews are listed from only the first time the comment was made, additional information is in red. Uh, so I'll list the open ones from two fifteen nineteen review for planning. It was regarding tactile strips at the bottom of the sidewalk ramps will be required at the entrance and cycle av. It said that was addressed, however, no tactile strips are proposed for the Main Street entrance. Please see new comments for further information. From four seventeen nineteen. There still appears to be issues with the proposed grading, there appears to be a bust in these eighteen and seventeen contours. It says see new comments for expansion on this comment. Uh, a note was added to the plan. That GW would be verified at least fifteen feet below grade in the field. Prior to the approval of these plans, we recommend that a test pit be dug to confirm there's enough clearance. From groundwater to install the proposed drainage system, the bottom elevation of the proposed stone envelope should be determined. And at least two feet of clearance over seasonal high groundwater should be provided, then in red. If the groundwater elevation is left for determination in the field and it is discovered that two feet of separation cannot be provided. The leaching system would have to be redesigned. The project has been permitting since our first review in February of twenty nineteen. Determination of groundwater could have been done by now to avoid any potential field redesign. In planning and ZBA boards or administrative plan modification approval. We recommend that the groundwater elevation be determined prior to approval. Uh, will there be signs or pavements marking the reserved resident and employee parking spaces? The current plan indicates six spaces for residents against the rear of the building. Are these reserved for residents' use only? If so, how will it be indicated on site? We defer to the board if this should be addressed. From one twenty-seven twenty, review for planning. The entrance in the drive aisle appear to be out of alignment, there was a reduction in width from thirty-two feet wide to twenty-four. However, the configuration does not appear to align correctly. The revised plan still did not address this comment, the driveway at street opening permit will require the curb opening and sidewalk at the main entrance. To be reconstructed to align with the driveway. Tactile strips will be required on both sides of the entrance, see the following sketch. There is a sketch provided, since this is all work off-site and in the public right of way. We refer to the board if this should be addressed prior to approval or as part as the permit for engineering. Uh, new comments. What are the detailed A, B, and C balloons on the layout plan referring to? What is the easement area in exhibit A labeled on the layout plan referring to? Project must not direct stormwater run after public property or others of public rights away. Uh, we request the board include the following condition or similar, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or street opening permit and post any required bond to the engineering division. Prior to obtaining a building permit, the applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division, including any required inspections and erosion and sediment control. Where construction on this site could impact the adjacent MS four stormwater system in Main Street, we will require an erosion and sediment control plan meeting. Requirements found in the attached soil erosion sediment control standard conditions. We request the board include the following condition or similar. The applicant shall submit an erosion and sediment control plan to engineering division for approval prior to obtaining a building permit. The plan shall meet the requirements in the document soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. There still appear to be conflict with the proposed grading on site, we recommend that the plans be reviewed and revised prior to approval. Isn't, it isn't clear how and where the concrete curb terminates to the southwest corner of the site. Does it end vertically, we recommend that this information be added to any approved plans. It isn't clear how the concrete curb along the southeast property line interfaces with the existing abutting property without encroachment or grade breaks. The back of curb is shown directly on the property line with no space remaining to grade up or down to the existing grades. If the top of the curb doesn't match them. That means the curb top could be sticking out of the ground or be below the adjacent grades, there is an elevated brick walk along the north side of the abutting building. That does not appear to be shown. We recommend that detail be added to the plan to show how this site meets the existing abutting sites without off-site work being required. If off-site work is required, then the appropriate easement should be obtained prior to any approval. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per section ninety-nine one affixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance. And then they list the soil and sediment control standard conditions. From the fire department, this is dated May fourth. This correspondent concerns application twenty-seven twenty for special permit to construct in addition to the existing building and convert to a restaurant with three apartments above at seven nine seven Main Street. Falmouth Fire Rescue Department has reviewed the plans for access and hydrant locations. Whereas the building will be required to have a fire sprinkler system installed. We requested the developer coordinate the installation of the fire hydrant with the water department's Main Street Water Main project. Where the building will be required to have a sprinkler system and fire alarm system. Unblocked access to the fire department connection FTC for the sprinkler system should be considered. Uh, from planning. There have been two applications before the planning board in recent months regarding this address, the first application has gone before the planning board in some form on four different occasions. The second application regarding parking went for the board in January. Planning board voted on June fourth, twenty nineteen to approve the application for the construction of forty-four seat restaurant on the first floor. And three two-bedroom residential units above. The applicant proposed a shared parking agreement along cycle av. On September tenth, twenty nineteen, the planning board voted to approve the application of seven nine seven Main Street for construction of a mixed-use structure for either a forty-four indoor seat restaurant. Or a thirty-two indoor seat and twelve outdoor seat restaurant on the first floor and three two-bedroom residential units above. On December twentieth, twenty nineteen, the planning board voted to approve a revised site plan for seven ninety-seven Main Street for the construction of a mixed-use structure for forty-four indoor seat restaurant or thirty-two. Indoor seat and twelve outdoor seat restaurant on first floor and three two-bedroom residential units above. On February eleventh, twenty twenty, the planning board voted to allow the planning office staff to administratively improve modifications to the site plan. Modifications included a traffic template showing truck circulation and relocation of the dumpster. In addition, on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, the planning board voted to approve a separate special permit. Application for seven ninety-seven Main Street for the construction of parking spaces within five feet from the property lot. Conservation is no comment on the proposed project. It is not, it is not located. Within conservation jurisdiction or within a flood hazard zone. And assessors no comment. And that's it for now.
Bob, and once again, if there's anyone who has any public comment, questions, or concerns. Type in your name and address into the webinar chat and we will address it when the time comes. And Mr. Chuba.
Yes, good evening. My name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at one twelve State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. And I'm here representing the applicant tonight on this special permit application. As you have read into the record, this is a special permit in compliance in with section two forty dash three C for an. For existing, pre-existing non-conforming structure. Just, just to refresh your memories, I know it's been a while. Last time we appeared before your board, I think it was back in January of twenty twenty. I know Mr. Dugan had read so many comments and plans and the reason for that because we had submitted several, you know. Site layouts and you know the, the, the history behind this site with going back and forth between your board and the planning board and trying to work. The, the, in agreement with the adjacent property owners who owns the property to the north. West and the east and we did, we do have an agreement with Mr. Jamal, I believe he's, he, I talked to him this morning. He was gonna be, he was trying to get on the. On the meeting. If he's not on, it would be for some technical, that's what I was, he would hold me back. Basically, just to recap your memories, this is the existing building at seven ninety seven Main Street. The, the site measures approximately zero point forty three acres, eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. And located in the business redevelopment zone. This. This property was the former Cumberland Farms gasoline pumping station and has been vacant for over a few years. Currently, the, the, the underground fuel storage tanks, expensive fuel pumps and canopy structure have been removed from the site. There's an existing L-shaped. Building approximately one thousand eight hundred fifty square feet at the site which was used. Which used to be the convenience store for the gasoline pumping station. Access to the site is via two existing driveways off of Main Street. And approximately ninety four percent of the site is covered with impervious surfaces including rooftops, base parking, and driveways. The property owner is proposing to demolish the existing building excluding the. Concrete foundation structure. Add eight hundred thirty six square feet to the existing building first floor footprint. And construct a one and a half story building on top of the first floor. The first floor of the building would be used as a forty four seat restaurant. And when we refer to forty four, this is aggregate forty four. That forty four includes the twelve seasonal. Outdoor seedings that we would be using in the summertime if we had the option to. And that the, the entire first floor square footage would be approximately two thousand five hundred sixty square feet. The dining room, which is about one thousand two hundred square. Three residential apartments are proposed on top of the restaurant. Currently, all runoff generated from the site from the impervious and developed areas cheat flows untreated in the northerly and southerly directions and drain to cycle Avenue and Main Street stormwater collection system. There are no stormwater structures or drainage collection system on site. With the proposed redevelopment and site modification, all runoff from impervious surfaces on site, including cave parking, sidewalks, rooftop, and landscape surfaces would be. Collected and directed to an onsite. Leaching drainage system designed to accommodate the two point five inch per hour intensity runoff volume as required by the town of Falmouth. This has been revised by the town engineer several times and I agree the change, the, the, the plans had changed several times and every time the, 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 the plans changed, there was some comments, but. All the comments from, you know, they're very technical comments have nothing to do with, with zoning by, with all respect. I mean, we are required to get a curb cut. For the modification of the, of the, of the existing drivers from DPW. We would address all the comments when we submit the application to DPW and engineering. Also with the improvements, we will be removing. Two thousand square feet of impervious surfaces. And replace it with, with landscape. Therefore, will be reducing the, the, the impervious coverage from ninety four percent to eighty two percent and adding eleven percent of green space to the property. Will be eliminate, eliminating one, the easterly driveway on the site and replacing it with green space in order to improve traffic circulation. We will be eliminating parking in front of the property and keeping the parking to the side and to the rear of the property. Also, redevelopment design is in compliance with section two forty dash, fully Business Redevelopment District of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. Which propose, which, which purpose is to promote the revitalization of commercial centers using mixed user development, integrating retail, restaurant, and community services uses with housing. Such as second floor apartments, condominiums, and townhouses. This redevelopment fosters pedestrian-friendly streetscape by requiring rear and side yard parking, allowing shared parking. Between businesses and uses. And this is exactly what we did. We worked out the, the share parking and the circulation between the three. Adjacent properties to the north, west, and east. And allowing parking reduction in exchange for onsite green space. This district, this also this district. This district also relaxes front side, front side and rear yard setbacks to encourage sidewalk development and pedestrian-friendly storefront to offer street. Side gathering places in front of redeveloped properties rather than front yard parking fields. What we did, we eliminated all the, the impervious surfaces from the front. We turned it into green space and turned it into. Outdoor space that could be used in the summertime. You know, this is, this, this redevelopment is, meets the core of section two forty dash forty and also this. Layout was the result of, of almost a year and a half of work between us, your, your board. I remember. Working the, the details with this board back in November, December, and October on the, on providing the parking and the. The loading space and showing the template of the delivery trucks and, and all these site issues. This site plan was approved by the planning board and also we were granted a special permit to park within five feet of the property lot. At the last meeting when we appeared before your board. And again, the issues where the parking, the parking and the parking and the parking on cycle avenue. My client appeared before your board with his attorney and. And simply said, this is an application for an extension. Expansion or modification of existing non-conforming structure. This is not, the site plan review was the purview of the planning board. The planning board did review the site. They approved the park. And we have a, a. A, a, in agreement with, with the pro, with the adjacent property that was also recorded at the registry. We do meet all the required parking. We do, as I said, we, this is an improvement over what existing right now. This is an improved, this is, this is. A tremendous improvement of what's there now in terms of layout, landscape, safety, you know, so. We really, I mean, in the past a year and a half, we've been going between zoning boards and planning boards, zoning board and planning boards, and this is, this is the plan. It meets all the requirements of. Your. Zoning bylaws, it meets the site plan. Guidelines and it was approved by the planning board and I kindly ask. Tonight to approve this site with conditions. We have no issues with meeting all the required conditions from the fire department, the. Planning. Water, engineering, DPW sewer. We need to move on. We still have a lot of work to do. Next step would be go, we need to go to the. Select board so we can get the approval and the increase of the, of, of the sewer. So. Please, I, I'm here. I can, I'll be glad to ask to answer any questions you have and I kindly ask you for your favorable review and approval of this special.
Thank you, Mr. Chuba and. The voting members on this application are the regular voting members. And once again, if anyone out there has any question, comment, concern, just use the webinar chat, type in your full name and address into the webinar. Get to that shortly. As for board questions, Ken, would you like to start us off if you have anything?
Well, you know, basically, there's a, a ton. Of details in the engineering referral that I guess need to be. Addressed and I'm not sure what we, I think, you know, I, I, I agree with them, but the fundamental. Arguments Mr. Chuba is making that this is an improvement overall to the site. But there are all these details with. You know, I don't think we can approve this until they've been resolved. That's my thought.
Thank you, Ken. Mary, any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ted?
Do we have a list of the things that aren't? Approved or what? Is there a short list of things that are done, not done, that needs to be done? And they, they really affect us or is it?
So we have, we have the list that I. So we have the list that I read tonight, which is coming from the engineering division. In most of the con, in most of the comments, they're saying that. You know, in some cases, some of this should be considered prior to any approval. There might be some other ones that you can do. Condition wise with the approval. You know, I understand that this is an application for modification of structure, but I, I've also asked questions about this. To town council to see if we're limited to just talking about this. Structure and I was told that when we're looking at these projects, this is a restaurant, there's seating issues. That we do have to review parking. We do have to review flow. We do have to look at any safety concerns. So. You know, I understand the frustration with the project in general, but that is something that is under our purview to do. I, I just had a few basic questions just to refresh my mind and break it down. So as far as the, the seating that you have. What is the required parking? Can you name what, show us where the parking spaces are? Out of the parking spaces that aren't exclusive to you and are on a first come, first served basis. How many businesses have access to those spaces? Usually when we see shared parking, we have hours of operations. So we know that, you know, parking is available. You know, during high hours for different businesses. I'm sure that's something you considered at some point. But if you can give us a breakdown on that. While I have you there, I know that there. Not going to get into the easement agreement. I don't want to go through a bunch of rigmarole on that anymore, but. I would want town council to review. So we know that the shared parking that's on, that has anything to do with that agreement. Does conform to the court case listed in that agreement. So that the town does not assume any liability if we approve shared parking on a site where it may or may not be allowed. So I, I mean, I'm sure we'll at least continue this for one hearing, but that's something that I would like to weigh in from town council. We have not been given any details. There are portions that are on a separate lot that don't have a structure. And I'm not playing attorney. I just want to make sure that somebody reviews it so that if we give an approval. We are not liable for proving something that just isn't legally required.
My understanding that the town council had reviewed the, the, the agreement and you had, you had. You had an email from the town planner saying that they, that he did, he did look at this and approved it.
And, and, and we do, we, yeah, we do have that email from the town planner, but when I asked town council, I was given a different answer. So. What we need is it from, we need it from the town council versus from the town planner. Maybe it was done and he'll change it, but. Just, it normally wouldn't be an issue, but there's a, there's a, a court decision that is stated in the agreement. I don't know what the whole court decision is. I don't know how it works. I just want to make sure that. What's, what they're giving you is just allowed on the site. But if you could just tell us again, how many of the required parking spaces are shared and out of those shared spaces? How many businesses are sharing those for use on a first come, first served basis?
I, I think if you have, do you have the plan, you, you have set of planes in front of you. Or I can, if I can, I can share the screen. I mean. So I can, I can. Show you the site layout, this sheet number three, or I can go over the numbers, but let me, let me.
The share, the share screen would probably be easier because everybody can see it.
Okay. So this is the site layout with the parking. The, this is the building. We do have seven parking spaces along the rear of the building. And we do have seven parking spaces along the side. We do have nine parking spaces along this side also. The, the parking requirements for this project, according to your zoning bylaws, you need one parking per two seats of the restaurant. So. The restaurant is forty four seats and that includes the outdoor seedings, indoor seedings, all seedings. So we need twenty two parking spaces for the. We also need two. Parking spaces per apartment. That's six parking spaces and twenty two. We need a total of twenty eight parking spaces. Okay, on our site, we have twenty three parking spaces. And I'll go through that. The seven on this side. This seven, that's fourteen. Also four here, that's nineteen. And these are the four spaces that are on first come, first served. Okay? That is twenty three parking spaces. On cycle Avenue. We do have nine parking, exclusive nine parking spaces for seven ninety seven. That makes it thirty two parking spaces. So repair this twenty eight, provide this thirty two. That's the parking space. Other than that, I think we, with the layout, Dugan, I remember going back and with the layout and I agree. I mean, I'm not saying you, you don't have any input on site. We did revise the site according to your recommendation. If you're, if you recall, we did relocate the dumpster to the rear of the building. We provided the. A loading area because we didn't have a loading area before. We have a fifteen, I think, I believe it's a thirty by fifteen. Loading spot in front of the dumpster. And you requested, I believe, that all the parking spaces for the apartments should be marked or either by pavement or adding. Sign, which we had no issue. And also we, you, you asked us to show the template of the delivery truck. Coming into the site, not using the Main Street for, for delivery. And we did that. So it's not, we did go back and forth. And back in, in, I remember September, October, November, December, back and forth with the site at one time because. We were looking at not using cycle avenue for parking and ask for a ten percent reduction if you recall. So. I hope I answered your questions regarding parking and layout.
So on the, on the traffic flow. It looks like there's an in and out on one side and then when you get to the cycle lab, it looks like it's a one way. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any, um, just to know, is there any kind of signage or anything that's related to that or, you know, no entrance, exit only or? Now one way?
I. I have to check. If not, that's not, it's not an issue at all. We can just add it.
And then my.
The plans have been changed so many times and I, I.
My only other comment, which was a change that was done before, it looks like it's taken out again, is at the, at the, where it says existing driveway, I think we have your original signage, there's a. There's a cement opening before you get to that first planting bed.
Right.
Shows is twelve feet wide. Shows is 12 feet wide. So my one, my one concern there was the one that last time is that the adjacent property next door, because they're limited to their front parking, a lot of times people will try to squeeze through or do a U-turn on, on the street. So I think it would be best to have something in there that doesn't allow a vehicle to pass through it. So I know at one point you put in green space, which is great. I think green space would help if not green, so they fall or just something. I just don't want a situation where somebody's coming from an adjacent property cutting through right onto incoming traffic.
Right. I, I think, I think we have Mr. Jamal here. And I think it might be, maybe best to answer this question. But the reason for showing this back, because this is the, this is the layout that was recorded, I, I guess, or the agreement that was, that was agreed on between the 797 and, and 815 Main Street LLC.
So if this, just a question, if this was the recorded plan, can you change this plan at all?
I, I mean, this, this is, the agreement is, is to provide the four parking spaces on, on first come, first served as we show on this side. And also to keep the access through the back of the property as we show it here.
So that little, so that little opening in front, is that actually part of that agreement that has, that has to remain open or no?
I, I, I am not 100% sure on that. But I think, I think Mr. Jamal is here and maybe we can, we can have him answer this question. I'm not sure. If this is a condition from the zoning board of appeal, it has to be placed. I think we can discuss that with, with Mr. Jamal.
For what it's worth, I agree with Robert, it'd be nice if that were green. I wasn't quite sure why, what that was providing access for. Is that so that next door they can cut through?
It was requested by Mr. Jamal. And I think, right now, this is all open, I think, and it's just, we kept it open and.
Well, it's always nice to define clearly where cars can go and where they can't.
Anything else, Bob?
No, though, that's it, just, just for later, just to find out the property hours of the different businesses sharing the spaces, just so we usually get those. I know they don't have any, I don't think they have a tenant yet for the restaurant. But if they did have a tenant, maybe we would know hours of operations there.
And with the screen share, everyone's position got switched around. Did I not get it to anyone yet? Scott, did I not get to you yet?
I've got a few.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Shuba, we've not met. Oh, forgive me if some of these questions are redundant, seeing that you've had a lot of plans. Has there been a soil abatement? Do you have any soil abatement documentation on the tank removal?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that part of this, this package here?
I don't think you have it, I can forward it, it's about 100 and something pages. But yeah, there was, there was a USD closure that the site is clean, there was no, no contamination. And they dug down about 14, 15 feet. I have pictures, it's all sand. And this is why I keep going back and forth with the town engineer to say, you know, we did. But in order to, to, to go now and, and, you know, the, the, the back of the property is being used for parking and to dig a 12 foot hole right now and have to backfill it or re, re, restore the pavement. You know, we said, we already have proof that groundwater is way down and our system is eight feet down and groundwater is not even at 14 feet. So, so, but I do have.
I see, I see on, on your site detail page number two, you highlight, and I, I take it, you, you drew these plans, your firm drew these plans?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright, so you got a groundwater of plus 15, give or take, plus or minus, right?
Right.
How did you arrive at that number without a test?
I have a test, I have a test, a test, soil testing from when they did the, the USD closure report.
Is that in this application?
No, it's not, it's not.
Okay. Because, because that led me to my next observation and/or question. All of the structures on this page, I don't see an originating elevation. So are we to believe that, you know, it, it says elevations to groundwater to be verified by PE in the field at time of excavation? Is that when you're going to set your grades?
No, no, this is, no, this is just to confirm that there's enough separation between the bottom of my, my infiltration system and the groundwater. No, the grades, there's a benchmark on the property, that the property was surveyed and we have a topo and all. You know, the finished floor is elevation 15, 1865.
And the only reason I ask that is again, this is the first time I'm seeing this project. But you would see why the town engineer would be interested in that information prior to get a favorable recommendation in, in Mr. Dugan's folder, right? So, so that would be very important. We depend a lot on what the professionals in the engineering department think of projects, being that we're all not experts on everything. But for me personally, to have a little bit more information on a soil profile and, and reading these structures and knowing where they're going, knowing where groundwater would be and how effective your drainage and, and, and all these structures going in the ground would be important to me personally at reviewing this file. I, I concur with the town engineer, that would be pretty, pretty important information to have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now, but I'd like to reserve in case there's something else that come up.
Very good, Scott, thank you. And Ed, did I, did I ask if you have any questions yet?
Yeah, you did, and I got into all the last conversations. But the, I guess, is there a, could somebody take the time and make a short list of all the things that are still open? I mean, we seem to bring them up and the gentleman explains all the things. But then there's always a one or two left over. We had a short list of all the things that are open in this. Maybe we could tackle them and get this wrapped up.
Thank you, Ed. And just to echo Ed and Bob's concerns regarding the engineering comments, I think at a, at a minimum, we should get the, the issues that they've identified that they would like to see resolved prior to us rendering a decision. I'd, I'd at least like to see those be addressed.
So the groundwater determination would be needed now?
In the record.
Yeah, to actually be submitted. Because that's the, that's the one thing that engineering questioned that because the project has gone on a long period of time, they expected it would be done already. And they're suggesting we do no approval until they receive that information.
Well, they're looking at it with, there was an extensive, extensive amount of engineering done for all, all the structures that have to go in the ground in a tight area. And it just stands to reason, he would want to know where groundwater was. Because if they, they inadvertently hit groundwater at a higher level, it would change everything.
So you, you need to know, they have.
Absolutely.
But there were, there were a lot of little things, you know, the exact location where the curb and the grading misaligned, things like that. I'm not, usually when we approve a plan, you know, we say we're according to plan. And it's hard to do that if there's a lot of defects in the plan. So I'm not sure whether we want to have that all resolved and get engineering sign off or whether we just make a detailed list of conditions or some general condition that says approved, you know, assuming all of the requirements of the engineering department are met.
I don't think we could put that all on them. I mean, this plan looks, without elevations, it's a boilerplate plan. And you can't leave that responsibility to engineering. It's not their job. They have to approve a plan that's already put in, in, in place, in my opinion.
No, I don't disagree, I'm, I was posing it as a question, really.
But they signed the plan, right?
Well, you've got to remember too, that on, on the engineering comments, these aren't new. I mean, the first one came from February of 2019, then April of 2019, that was last year. Then January 27th of 2020. So, you know, none of these are, you know, April, May, June, these were a long time ago. So because they're, they're that far gone in dates, I think you'd have to get answers to all of these in advance. I mean, it's not, it's not something that just came up. This is something that's been through the entire process before.
Alright, so it sounds like we, we need answers on all of the engineers. And just to echo Bob's concern regarding the parking arrangement. Bob, you made reference to getting town council to.
Yes, I think we did a couple of things. I think, you know, whatever the easement was, it was originally agreed upon, we should have a current copy of everything that was reported in that easement for the current file. Town council should review that easement agreement and also the court case that's referenced in that agreement. There's a court case that's referenced and said that this plan does not interfere with those rights in any way. If it doesn't, that's fine. My worry on that is if it does interfere with those rights and we approve it, not only would the applicant be liable, but I think at that point the town would be liable because we had given a decision based on information that, that we deemed was correct. So I think you need, you need that. I think we need to know how many businesses are sharing the shared parking spaces and the hours of operation. You know, just going by, you've got a bait and tackle shop, the guys come through with the boats and stuff, that's really busy mornings and midday. You've got a, you've got a restaurant there, a takeout restaurant. I don't know if they're open at nights, but what their hours are. You have a bank that's also using this site for circulation and parking just off of it. You need to know all those hours. Because when we've looked at stuff in the past, we've always looked at shared parking as it makes complete sense. You have a business that does something midday, high, high season, and you got someone else that uses it at night, it makes perfect sense, share the parking. But if you've got five or six businesses all vying for seven parking spaces and they're all operating on the same time, realistically, that just doesn't work. And I know that they're limited because they did record whatever they recorded. That's why I want a copy of that in the file. Because I think what's been recorded, they would need an agreement with the abutting person, part of the agreement, to change that. If there, there are sections that we cannot change, that we need to, then they would have to deal that with whoever the other owner is, you know, to meet what we need. But we just don't have, we just don't have that information. You know, I personally think that when the announcements go up, and I know it's not needed because it's this project, but if you have a project in this town, and you're relying on shared parking, and that shared parking is on another site, I think that should be listed in the notices that went out. I think that people that abut that other site should be aware that that parcel was affected. I don't know if it's legally needed, but I just think it should have been done, you know, in this case or other cases. Because you got a whole other set of circumstances that might come into effect. Right here, you've got a situation where you've got a one-way that has now been created, which was never a one-way before. I don't know if whoever can access that road in their original rights to pass over the road, I don't know if you can stop them from going against the one-way. Let town council go over it. That, as far as I know, that wasn't a one-way exit. That was connection of another site to get to and from Main Street if they ever desired to continue to do so. There's no documentation in the file regarding that other property that has the access rights. In the last hearings last year, I asked, could somebody please, maybe you could contact them if they don't have an issue, contact them, get an agreement. I don't know if that ever happened because we just haven't heard anything. But, you know, when we discussed with the assessor's office last time, the assessor's office said you couldn't have a separate parcel without a structure. It is used as a parking lot without a different permit for that parcel. There is no permits for that parcel as a parking lot. So I don't know if that's something that other person needed or not. I don't know if that's a violation of their easement agreement. But those are all questions that I actually thought would all be in the file with this application because we hashed it all out before. And I know we went back and forth with the planning board, it was an exhausting process. But quite honestly, I think they should have gone over some of this information. The town planner did not answer any of that information for us on the park. His answer was that in his opinion, you can park on any road in Falmouth, as long as it doesn't say, "Don't park." That isn't a realistic position to take. You either are allowed to park somewhere or you're not allowed to park somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, it's 9:48, according to mine.
I didn't realize the time, would you like to make a motion, Ken?
So I would move that we go to, can we, you think we can get done by 10:15?
We can certainly try.
Push for it.
Okay, so that's, I'm going to move to 10:15.
Alright, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Bob, roll call, vote, Ken?
Second.
Ken Forman, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. Alright, Bob, anything else?
No, I mean, I think they know what, what I'm just looking for, for information for the file so that it can just all be reviewed by whatever parties need to review it.
So we just need a motion to continue then?
Think we would.
I would move that, continue to, Noreen, what's your recommendation?
I'll leave that to.
We've got some dates coming up. July, July 9th would be optimal.
Okay, I would move we continue to July 9th. I would say 6:30 here in town hall, but who knows?
Who knows? Alright, so that motion was made by Ken continuing to July 9th at 6:30 and Scott seconded it. Roll call, vote, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. Mr. Shuba, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have applications, it's a continuation, application 78-19 Buzzards Bay Development LLC, 40 Shore Street in Falmouth. We took this out of order to hear at the end of the hearing list. And the voting members on this are myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Mary Berry. And we have Attorney Clower for the applicant.
So Mr. Chairman, just before we start, just, just for some information. So the provisions that we received, we only received two days ago. The applicants are aware that they need to be received a week in advance in order for us to review them. The other issue that arose is that the PDFs that we received do not match the plans that are in the file. There's stuff that's alphabetical to numerical, there's changes in square footages, they just don't relate. So the information that we have may not be actually what we're going to see because what we're probably going to see is what's in the file.
Thank you, Bob. And once again, if there's any public comment, just type in your name and address into the web. Thank you, Bob. And once again, if there's any public comment, uh, just type in your name and address into the webinar chat. Uh, and we will make that announcement when the time comes. And, uh, I know from earlier in the evening, I'll have to scroll up and find it, but someone did provide comment earlier. Uh, but with that having been said, Attorney Clower.
Uh, good evening, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. And I'm attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicant for Buzzards Bay Development LLC. Uh, before I begin, um, Matt Terry's already a panelist, but if we could also bring in, uh, Matt Costa as a panelist. And also Mark Bogosian. Thank you. Um. Mr. Dugan is correct, we did submit plans, uh, later than we had hoped for. Um, those plans, what we were trying to do is simply. Submit a complete new set of plans, which is why they don't match the previous plans, uh, because there's been changes to them since, uh, since the initial applications. Um, rather than having a piecemeal plan here and a piecemeal plan there. Uh, we thought it best to submit a complete set of plans in hopes of, uh, eliminating some confusion. Um, as you know, we are seeking a comprehensive permit for the development of the property at Forty Shore Street. Under chapter forty B of the Massachusetts General Laws. Uh, as a very brief refresher, because I know we've been over this, Forty Shore Street is a large lot located on the east of the side. Of, uh, Shore Street, uh, near the main street at. It's oversized for the area being one point one, two acres. And it is zone general residence, not in a coastal pond overlay or, or a water resource protection district. What the applicant's proposing is to renovate the existing historic dwelling and to eliminate the existing garage and greenhouse. And to build, uh, an additional seven two-story single-family homes. Uh, of those eight homes, including the affordable, two would be, two would be, I'm sorry, of those eight homes, including the existing at the front, two would be restricted as affordable. The design was done in a tasteful manner and is in line with the surrounding area. We have received, uh, approval from Mass Housing, Mass Housing, uh, a letter of eligibility and site approval. Um, and that letter notes that the project maintains, uh, consistent massing scale and building typology to the existing neighborhood. Since the last meeting, uh, the plans were revised to add the fourth bedroom, the building three. Um, this change has increased the square footage of the unit by about two hundred square feet. And we've also added additional square footage to building one, both of the affordable units. Uh, there were a number of previously made changes that were, uh, completed in order to address the board's concerns. Which include the relocation of the driveway, uh, an increased landscape buffer, reduced patios on buildings three and eight. Modified and reduced parking courts in front of units six, seven and eight, uh, reduction of gravel to add grass. Uh, and we have submitted correspondence to address engineering and the water department, uh, comments. Um, I want to note at this point that we were unable to add a second garage to the affordable unit as Mr. Dugan had, uh, suggested. Uh, doing so would skew the plans dramatically in terms of spacing and, and sizing. Um, and a removal of a second car, second garage from one of the market rate units has really significant financial impact on the project, which has an already very thin margin. Uh, as was noted at the last meeting, the requirement is for similar appearances, they need not be identical. Uh, the mass housing approval letter. Reflects a profit margin of ten point seven four percent, which is well below the allowed reasonable return. Uh, mass housing allows for a reasonable return of up to twenty percent with a floor of fifteen. When you are, pardon me, when you're below fifteen percent, uh, the expected return, in this case, ten point seven four. Becomes the new minimum and any conditions that lower that return further are considered uneconomic. Uh, the feasibility of this project is predicated on the sale of the larger units as they really subsidize the affordable units. Uh, the applicant and the team have worked diligently with the neighbors, uh, for a significant length of time. They, to arrive in appropriate design and density. They've acted in precisely the manner that we want to develop it act, taking in community feedback and coming up with what is truly a modest proposal. As it is, it stands at the edge of economic feasibility. Um, as was discussed in the mass housing letter, uh, the town has nine hundred and ninety subsidized housing inventory units. Which is, uh, six point six six of, of, uh, the total units. Uh, four hundred and ninety-seven units short of the goal. We should be encouraging, uh, additional units, not turning them away. Uh, because of, of minor discrepancies or minor, uh, wish items. Uh, this is a good project. It's received support from the butters and the neighborhood and the affordable housing committee. Uh, I said this at the last meeting and I, I think it's, I think it's true today, you know. We just ask that you not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Uh, if you, if you, if you do, the applicant simply can't proceed and has to consider alternate designs and projects. Um. That effort, you know, may come closer to complying with the wishes of the board, but in doing so would, would disregard neighborhood input. Uh, we, the applicant has worked very hard to address the concerns and the comments the board has raised, have been raised by various. Uh, departments, uh, and we think that we've done that in, in an appropriate and, and again, tasteful manner that, that, that fits with the neighborhood. And, and reflects what the discussions with the neighbors have been. I hope that this addresses the concerns that the board's raised and the board's able to move this matter forward. Uh, I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And, uh, once again, if there's any questions, comments, concerns out there for members of the public. Uh, type in your name and address into the webinar chat and we will, uh, get to it when the time comes. And as for board questions, uh, let's see, Bob, would you like to start us off?
So, Mr. Clower, since our last meeting on what our concerns were and what our changes are, we were looking for. What if any of those changes have you put into this new plan?
Sure, so we, we did add a fourth bedroom to unit, uh, unit three, as was requested. And we were able to increase the square footage unit one as well. So the, the change, uh, the addition of the, the bedroom in unit three. Did result in, uh, increased square footage of that unit and we did increase the square footage unit one. And what we tried to do was to, uh, simplify by, by synthesizing the plan. So we had a complete package of. Uh, the plans at, at this point.
So, so I recall that at our last meeting, the concern was that. They didn't want four-bedroom units. We were looking at three. So why would you add a fourth bedroom to the affordable unit?
You, you, you had specifically asked that a fourth unit be, a fourth bedroom be added in order to match the market rate units.
You were considering maybe adding another unit, but our issue was that the administrator had commented that she had talked to. Someone and they said that they also didn't see needs for four-bedroom units. Am I off there somewhere?
I, I, I think you might be, Mr. Dugan, because my recollection was that you specifically had asked for a fourth bedroom to be added to one of the affordable units.
Noreen, could you, could you address that?
So I think the misunderstanding here was that with the original proposal being four. Three-bedroom units and four, four-bedroom units. That mass housing would typically take one of the three bedroom units and one of the four bedroom units. As an affordable unit. Uh, they do reserve the right to select which unit or units will be affordable. Um, I did have a conversation with a representative from Mass Housing. They had represented to me that, albeit that they did issue the site eligibility letter. That they still were not looking for four-bedroom units as affordable units.
Again, I would, I would just say, you know, we wouldn't have added a fourth bedroom to one of the affordable units unless it had been specifically requested. Um, I haven't been over the tape of the meeting, but, uh, my, my recollection again is that Mr. Dugan specifically asked. That a fourth bedroom be added so that it matched the, uh, uh, market rate units. Um, I thought that was a departure from the board's previous comments. Uh, pushing for one or two bedroom units, but that was certainly what was presented and, and we wouldn't have done it otherwise.
Um, and if I could, uh, just chime in for a moment for the record, Matt Terry, attorney at Amen Clower here in Falmouth. Just reading from the, uh. DHCD, uh, Housing Design Guidelines, this is, uh. Revised December twenty fourteen. Um, and we're, I'm looking at page, uh, V one, the section V D. Uh. Let's see, it says in pertinent part. All low and moderate income units shall have two or more bedrooms provided. Those units for the elderly and accessible units may be one-bedroom units. Student, studio units or one-bedroom units may be approved for good cause. It is recommended that at least fifty percent of the low and moderate income units be for families or large households and have three or more bedrooms.
You're applying. Thank you for that, Attorney Terry.
Thank you.
Yeah, Attorney Clower, um, you also added square footage to, was it one of the market rate units?
Both marker, um, both of the affordable rate units have had square footage added to them.
But didn't you also add square footage to the market rate units?
No.
Any other questions, Bob?
No, that's all you have for now.
Thank you. Mary, any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ed, anything?
Uh, today we got it, uh, like at three o'clock or four o'clock. Three pages from the engineering department. And it was dated today and there's a whole bunch of things that need to be resolved. And I, and I didn't have time. Four thirty to go find the drawings. To show that these things that haven't been done, haven't been done and things that, there's a fair amount of things that. Are hanging out in, in the air. Would need to be addressed and you can't do it today.
Right, and I believe those comments do address, uh, the plans that were submitted earlier this week. Uh, Attorney Clower, are you in receipt of?
Yes.
Yeah, we do receive them.
Engineering.
Um, and I'll, I'll let Matt Costa speak to this. However, I would note that, um, majority of those items have been resolved. I think that the only, uh, there were three or four open items, um, that largely spoke to. Uh, two of them said they hadn't received the landscape plan, uh, but a landscape plan has been submitted. Um, and I don't recall the other one off the top of my head, but, but if, uh, Mr. Costa is here, he can chime in on this.
Alright, Mr. Costa, if you could speak to the open comments on, uh, the engineering, the most recent engineering referral, please.
Uh, sure, there's. Five open comments. One is about no landscape plan. Two says that, uh, quote, we request that any approvals included condition. And you can read the rest of it. So he's, he's just asking for a condition there. Uh, number three is he requested any approvals included different condition about soil erosion, so. It's not really an item, he's asking for a condition. Four is about the landscape plan. And, uh, five is about, uh, they're requesting. A condition for an outside consultant and, uh, I think Mark and Kevin might want to address that one. But, uh. There's no open engineering that I see.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Uh, Attorney Clower, I'm not sure if you want to, uh, address anything of any of the open comments.
I think we've talked about the, um, idea of a potential clerk of the works in the past. Um, and again, it comes down to. Um. You know, what, what are typical conditions that we place? Um, and speaking with the applicant, he, he has, uh, indicated, you know, uh, an amenability to, uh, what's called controlled construction. Um, which is essentially an architect signing off on the various stages of the project. And, and that would be submitted, uh, uh, on an as, as gone basis. Um, but the, uh, you know, we'd be resistant to the idea of a third-party clerk of the works that, that is again. Very costly and, and problematic in terms of the affordability of the project, of the feasibility of the project.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Clower. Uh, any follow-up questions from the board? Anything regarding the engineering comments or any other sort of follow-up questions?
Yeah, I, I just have a question. So again, on the square footage, and maybe it's because these plans just aren't matching, but. According to the PDFs that we got versus. What we had before in the new plans. Building five, which said it was a market rate unit, which on the old plans was building E. Shows it has twenty-eight hundred square feet and the previous showed twenty-six hundred square feet. G, which is building seven, market rate now shows is twenty-six fifty, previous it was twenty-six hundred. In building two, which is also known as B. Um, now shows is twenty-four fifty and the previous one I have shows twenty-four hundred. So I guess that's my questions. Were those increases in those square footages or was that mistakes on plans?
So, I'll have to check with our architect. I know that there has been no change to the footprints of the, of the market rate units. Um. So I'll have to, I'll have to circle back with the architect, uh, and signer on that to confirm. But there has been no change to the footprints of the market rate units. The only, the only changes to the footprints have been to the affordable rate units. Um, yeah, the affordable units.
So if there were no changes to the footprints, were there any changes to the layouts to increase square footage?
I don't believe so.
Alright, so just check those then, specifically building five, because that went up two hundred square feet according to what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I personally still have a concern with the two-car garages. I understand what your argument is that we need a two-car garage, but. Having single-car garages versus a two-car garage, I don't think is a. Huge issue down here. As long as you have a garage, it would save some density on the site. And the only buildings that have two-car garages are the market rate units. And when you go through a project, from my understanding, visually, architecturally. You shouldn't be noticing a difference. We dealt with this on another project in town. It had different rooms that, that the affordable units didn't do. And for that case, I really think they should all, if they have garages. If you can't do twos, then they should just have single-car garages.
The, the requirements of the architectural design be similar, not identical. Um, I think that. Um, again, going back to the, uh. The idea behind this is that the, the market rate units subsidize the affordable units. Removing a two-car garage, removing a, going from a two-car garage to one-car garage has, has an economic impact, uh, in the sale of the product.
So if there's an economic impact on that, then I'd like to know what the economic impact is. You're not reducing. Living space. And again, it's a status issue. You're dealing with forty B projects which are missed between market and affordable. And in the projects, the only ones that aren't affordable have the larger, bigger garages that are right up front, the exterior of the building. So. I, I do, I do think it is an issue. I think it's a status issue. If you, if you think it's a situation with economic and you think that's something that's going to be a problem. Um, then I'd like to see what the difference is in the economic if you went to a single-car garage.
Thank you, Bob. Um, we do have a couple of public comments that I'd like to. Just state right now. Uh, one is from earlier in the night. It's from John Callahan, three hundred Walker Street. Uh, he says, this property has been an eyesore for quite some time and not a good example of what downtown Falmouth should look like. New housing, specifically affordable housing in a very expensive neighborhood is great for our town. Uh, what I like is the owner is a neighbor who loves the neighborhood and town. Uh, what I, sorry, I took two screenshots, so I'd be able to. Uh, state the comment right now. Um, flipping to my next picture. Uh, he loves the neighborhood in town and is doing great things, uh, to make us proud. I am aware of other forty Bs on Main Street that have been approved and. This is a much better project for neighbors and the butters. Thank you, or thanks for your time. Uh, we also have, it looks like Denise Callahan also from three hundred Walker Street. She says, I have worked with Longfellow for many years. I believe his intentions for Shore Street is the, uh, is in the best intentions of the community. The forty B project is a great project for the community and the people who would benefit from this. I live on Walker Street and I am in support of forty B. Uh, so thank you both for providing your comments. And that's it for public comment as far as this application goes. Uh, as for. Uh, any other questions for the board? Mary, anything?
No.
Thank you, Mary. All right. And it's ten twelve, all right.
And, and speaking with the applicant, I mean, the, the issue is we've been, you know, we've been at this for six months and um, to come back tonight and be asked why we added a fourth unit when we were asked to add, add a, uh, asked out of, why we asked, why we added a fourth bedroom after we were asked to add a fourth bedroom, i- is frustrating, and I think it's, you know, we're, we're trying to make changes in good faith and, and to do things that we think are reflective of what the board is stating to us. The, you know, we, there is, maybe there's a way to fit a, a two car garage onto one of the units. It's not clear to me if what, what is being said is, in your mind, would need a two car garage in each affordable unit? Or if one affordable unit, again, the, the, the uh, the standard is that it be similar, uh, not identical. I think that if we, if we had, if we thought that we could move this forward in a way that would get this approved, we can look to redo the site plan and to, to some extent, it's but you know, it, it's, but, but again, it becomes this, it becomes this trickle down of changing the site plan, incur new engineering comments, incur new feedback loops, and we're, you know, we're happy to do it i- if, if it's moving the ball forward.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. So in terms of like, at least the, the garages, how, how does the board feel? Bob, you, you said a few things earlier about that.
So I think the easiest thing to do is to take the two units that have the two car garages and turn them to singles. It's gonna increase the density on the lot and it's gonna match all the other, other units, and then you don't have a situation where they stand out. As far as moving forward tonight, besides that, the only reason we're gonna have to continue is because we are not getting the information in the required amount of time we're supposed to get the information. And right now, unfortunately, the, the PDFs that we got that were submitted in, you know, Mr. Clower's letter that were forwarded to us do not match the plans that are in the file, and that's why I'm having questions about square footages because I'm staring at them right now and I, and I pulled three out at random and there are changes up to two hundred square feet. So if that's an error, that's fine, let's just know what the exact square footage is and, and deal with it at that point. It wasn't my understanding that I was asking to make one bedroom in a fourth, in an affordable unit, and that would say everything's fine with the project. In fact, I'm gonna review the tape too, but the whole discussion that night had to do with the developer was thinking of even adding an affordable unit or doing this and that, and Noreen made her comments about the four bedrooms before. So that doesn't make sense to me, but I will review that. As far as the garages, I see you dropped the doubles to singles. I do not think it's an economic issue, it's a garage, it's not habitable space. Makes the flow better in the project, everything matches better, and then see what other, the issues are that other people have. As far as engineering comments, these are not different engineering comments, these are the same comments that have been there from day one. It's the same comments that we read before, and there's still stuff that's open, so if there's engineering comments that's open, take it up with engineering. Close them out with engineering, do whatever changes engineering asks, and then we don't get the comments in the file that say, all these issues are still open. We are asking the board to make sure you get answers to these before you render a decision. So that's where we have to look at the engineering comments, if they didn't say that, I wouldn't care, but that's what they say in the file. So to be clear on the garages, in my opinion, get rid of the two cars and make them singles. I think that at least makes the units match, there isn't a division in status when you're going through a project, and we've had this issue on other projects before, and those kind of modifications were made. We're not asking you to get rid of living space in those units, it's just a garage. It's, it's, it's not a big deal. It really isn't a big deal. But any future information that is submitted, Kevin, you understand, especially when we're dealing with Zoom, we can't have submittals two days before a meeting. And then somebody come to the meeting and say, "We want a decision on a project, we've given you everything, and the stuff that we have doesn't match the other information that we have, so there's inconsistencies." You've known this.
To, to be, to be clear. To be clear, Mr. Dugan, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying, "I want a decision tonight." I'm saying that what we're getting is conflicting information. I'm fully aware that the plans came in late, and I will take full ownership of that. I, I, I was, I forwarded them as soon as I had them and had a chance to try to review them, and clearly we missed some things in, in, in effort to get them submitted, that is on me, I will own that. Um, and I'm not sitting here saying, "Well, you got your plans two days ago, let's have a decision." I, I, I want to make that clear. What, what I am saying is, I feel as though we're getting conflicting information because we made a change that was suggested to us, and we're being asked, "Why did you make that change?" That's the frustration I'm having. I, I am, I am very cognizant of the fact that the board's time is, is a valuable thing, and that we cannot submit something on Tuesday and expect to have a decision on Thursday. But what I'm trying to say is, if we're gonna make changes, I'd like to know that there are changes in the right direction. Because here we have a situation where we made a change based on what was said at the last hearing, and we're being told, "Why did you do that?" That's the frustration I have feeling.
Is And if I could just, uh, speak for a moment to one of the other issues that was raised both tonight and at the last hearing, with respect to the garages, I think it's really been asked and answered because the, we, as Attorney Clower said at the outset, um, since we're at ten point seven four percent uh, return, according to both the town bylaw and state uh, guidelines and regulations, any condition imposed by a board uh, that makes it impossible for a limited dividend organization to proceed and still realize a reasonable to, return is considered uneconomic. And I would argue that there is an economic value to a second garage, there are certainly homeowners who search for homes with a certain number of bedrooms, a certain number of bathrooms, and a certain number of garages. Uh, and, and so to say that it's just a garage, but then to insist upon discussing it, um, even though the town planner Tom Bott at the last meeting, I think, addressed it uh, fairly squarely and forcefully, that in all of his significant experience with forty B projects, uh, that he had never run into this issue and that it's not considered either at the state or the local level to be a, a requirement that the garage numbers match. Um, and I, so I think that's an additional source of frustration that this discussion really has been concluded as of the last hearing, and what we're hearing tonight is, not only is that not true, but it's not included this evening either.
So if you're making a statement that the loss of the garage from a two to a single is gonna make this uneconomic, then you show us the figures that show that that makes it uneconomic. If that's where you want to go with it, then go with, go with that, show us something that shows that that is gonna make it uneconomic, because we have had other projects we've done changes to because of this.
So there's a very specific process under both the bylaw and the code of Massachusetts regulations with respect to kicking the tires as to whether a project is uneconomic. And it can only, the town may only request after the following preconditions have been met. All the, all other consultant review has been completed. The applicant has had the opportunity to modify the proposal to address the issues raised. The board has had the opportunity to propose conditions and to consider requested waivers. And the applicant has indicated that it doesn't agree with proposed conditions or denial of waiver because they would render the project uneconomic.
So you just made a statement that the loss of the garage would render this uneconomic, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you're making that statement, that at the point you've now said that one issue is gonna make this uneconomic, then we need information to show why it's uneconomic, not just a blanket statement, hey, if you want to pro forma review, I'm happy to do a pro forma. It's, it's a simple change, I really am not trying to be difficult on this, I do not believe that what you're stating is correct, that the loss of a one bay of a garage is gonna have that much of an impact on this project. People in general that even in units downtown are happy to even get a garage.
Because the project is already below the fifteen percent threshold, even if it's a ten thousand dollar difference per unit, that's going to be uneconomic, that's a material difference to the return.
So then supply the information. You brought it up, go right ahead, supply the information.
Bob and Attorney Terry, I hate to interrupt, it is ten twenty, we did make the vote to extend only until ten fifteen, we would need uh, a vote to extend the, the hearing night, not, not only for this project, but for our other items as well. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, I, I probably can't do more than another five minutes, only because the system I'm using is losing percentage for some reason, so if you want to go for another five minutes or so, but after that, I, I may cut out.
All right, uh, is there a quick second to that?
Second.
Second by Ed, roll call vote. Ken?
Ken Forman.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, aye.
Ed?
Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Stosky, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye, so we have five more minutes.
So my, my question, uh, to the board and recognizing uh, the timeframe for submission of materials, when, when can we come back? We would, it's clear that we're not um, moving forward this evening, nor would I expect to, but what are, what are we looking at for a continuation date, my question?
June eleventh.
Sorry, what was that, Noreen? You cut out.
June eleventh.
June eleventh? Um, okay, yeah. One sec. Okay, we will have everything in no later than uh, Thursday the fourth.
Thank you, Attorney Clower, and we'll need a vote to continue to that date, is that motion? Bob, you're muted.
Noreen, it is June eleventh, right, the only reason I ask is because the last extension just went to July.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, we did save some space on that agenda.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it was the right month, so I'd make a motion to continue to June eleventh.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed, roll call vote, Mary?
Mary, Mary, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. Attorney Clower, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, everyone, we, we do appreciate it, thank you.
All right, hearings are wrapped up, moving on to our open meeting items, uh, we have voting the minutes of April thirtieth and May fourteenth.
And we're tabling the fourteenth, so just April thirty.
Just April thirtieth.
Make a motion to approve the April tenth, yeah, I'm sorry, April thirtieth. I mean.
Okay, Ed, is there a second?
Could, could he just repeat that, because he cut out on my monitor?
Could you repeat that, Ed, please?
Yeah, approve the minutes for April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Bob, roll call vote, uh, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Stosky, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye, and we're tabling the May fourteenth minutes. Uh, items two and three have already been taken care of tonight by being taken out of order and voted upon. Uh, Ford Board Discussion Management of the Butter Participation for Zoom Hearings, I don't know if anyone's come up with anything or if there's any other sort of updates as far as that goes.
I think you can still table that discussion if you want, but just to keep in mind that we do have forty Bs that are eminently due to be filed. And I think it's somewhat difficult to manage participation by several of butters.
Thank you, Noreen, so we'll uh, table that.
Could you just remind us again, because we're on this new extended schedule, like, like on the project we just had or these forty B projects, um, what deadlines are we being held to now?
So right now, the courts have put all of the deadlines on hold, so while forty Shore Street um, is essentially approaching within days, there are one hundred and eighty days within which to hold the hearing, you do have the right to continue, and you did have the applicant's consent. So you will have the opportunity to have additional time. You know, that would extend beyond whenever the emergency is continued to, they'll probably give you another forty five days beyond that. I mean, that being said, obviously you want to act as timely as possible, but right now your deadlines are on hold.
Thank you.
All right, uh, board updates, is there anything? Noreen, you probably don't have an answer to this, but uh, I saw in the newspaper today, Sandwich Town Hall is slowly but surely reopening to the public, do we know anything on Falmouth then?
So last thing I heard was they were hoping to look at some date in June that they would potentially allow people to start to come back into the town hall, but that's not been established.
And would that include uh, meetings as well, or I suppose that depends upon uh,
I, I couldn't tell you, I suspect that the problem is going to be the ability to social distance in the, um, on, you know, with people gathering in the selectman's meeting room.
And what sort of capacities, capacity issue we might be at, at that point.
Yep, and you're gonna have town meeting that will be an issue as well.
Thank you, Noreen.
Town manager was quoted in the newspaper today as saying, later part of June, it would be open.
Okay. Well, here's hoping we can get back to the selectman's room soon. Uh, anything else for future agenda items? All right, seeing none, our next meeting is June eleventh, six thirty here at a selectman's virtual town hall.
Actually, I think we're starting at six o'clock.
Oh, yes, we are starting at six.
So.
Executive session at six.
Right, so you'll be opening in regular meeting, you'll be adjourning to executive session, and then you'll be reopening in uh, regular meeting, probably around six thirty, so just so that anybody who's watching will know that they will not be permitted to attend during your executive session.
Very good. All right, Noreen, thank you, and to everyone else who, board members of CTV, Falmouth IT, thank you very much. Next meeting, June eleventh, six o'clock. Meeting adjourned.
Bye there, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.